Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 6th, 2017 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Let me do a quick preface to the agenda and let everyone know just how the agenda is structured. We have two items tonight that are recommendations to the Mayor and City Council, which means that the record's closed formally and we won't be taking public testimony. Those two items are the SDP amendment for the Kettlin Square infill sites and the SDP for CalAtlantic Homes at the Johnson property. So that means that as we talk about those, we're essentially taking the record that's already been established, formulating a recommendation to council, and sending it to them for their approval or denial, whatever they decide. So that's a discussion we'll have and a recommendation to council. Then we will have a site plan agenda which has two items. One is an amendment to the final site plan for the Market Square Shopping Center. So if there's any confusion about what part of Kettlin's we're talking about tonight. And that is in fact a site plan amendment, so that would be open for public testimony. As well as a final site plan amendment for an update, demolition and updated car showroom on North Ritter Avenue. So I just want to make sure that's clear. And with that, if we could please move on to the approval of our minutes from our November 15th, 2017 meeting. Is there any questions? And if not, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of November 15th, 2017. As written in the record.
Second.
Let's move to the second in all favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain since I wasn't there and I know there's probably a technicality that says I can vote for it, but since we've got the numbers, I'll abstain on that. So that's 401. I'll also announce formally that alternate Commissioner Phil Wessel is joining us in the dais and participating fully this evening as not all commissioners are present. That then takes us to our recommendations to Mayor and Council. And the first one up is SDP-7712-2017, Kettlin Square infill sites, part of parcel L Block Q in the MXD Zone, the addition of 16,000 square feet of commercial and minor site changes. And again, it's a schematic development plan and it's a recommendation to council. How are we setting this up? Are you going to present?
Yeah, I'm just gonna give a presentation and give you our staff's recommendation and then I suppose you guys will discuss. So, thank you, members of the planning commission. Good evening. This is the planning commission recommendation for schematic development plan application, The schematic development plan application proposes to construct three additional commercial infill buildings totaling 16,000 square feet along the private drive aisle connecting Kettlin's Boulevard and Main Street, as well as private or minor site changes. The application also includes design guidelines for the infill sites. And I'll begin by orienting you to the site itself, which is a 1.8 acre area of the Kettlin's shopping center, Kettlin Square Shopping Center, specifically within the Lowe's area. And the infill sites themselves are located in this area between the existing Mattress Firm and the Chipotle and Cold Stone Building. To the north is the Kmart property, which was the subject of a recently approved sketch plan for long-term redevelopment. And staff just notes that the Kmart sketch plan is separate from this schematic development plan. And the proposed infill sites here do not actually, or they don't preclude redevelopment long-term of this entire area as well, as envisioned by the Kettlin's Commercial District Master Plan. The joint public hearing was held on October 16th, 2017. The planning commission record closed at 5:00 PM on November 22nd, 2017. And at that time, there were 51 exhibits in the record file, of which 17 were submitted after the joint public hearing. During the joint public hearing, there were six main issues raised, and this is the rendered site plan that was presented at the joint public hearing. So one of the issues was the, or the concerns, was the adequacy of the sidewalk along the drive aisle and whether it could accommodate the outdoor seating and other things there. A mid-block crossing to connect the existing parking lot behind the Chick-fil-A building here with these proposed infill sites. Impacts to the parking, the available parking near the Lowe's site as a result of changing these parking lots into infill buildings. The impact of Kettlin's Boulevard on the goal of improving pedestrian connectivity between, to and from Kettlin Square. The compatibility of the drive-through with the overall vision of walkability shown in the proposed infill site plan. And impacts of additional retail here on the remainder of the shopping center's retail and also on other nearby retail areas. So in response to those comments, the applicant revised the site plan and prepared a detailed response statement, both of which are in the record, obviously. Also, they directed their engineer to conduct a parking demand study and traffic circulation analysis, and those are also in the record. So the plan proposes these three commercial standalone buildings. This is Site C, this is Site D, and this is Site E. There is a two-story height limit. The proposed uses are retail, restaurant, personal service bank, or personal service, sorry, banks, childcare, integrated light manufacturing, and office. So it may be one or more of those. And at full buildout, you'll likely see a variety of those allowed uses, not just, you know, only one type of use. Also, the site plan does show build-to lines, which allows flexibility to respond to the market demand for particular uses and particular sizes of tenants, as well as just general tenant needs. The sidewalk along the drive aisle, which would connect to an existing sidewalk here at the Chipotle Cold Stone Building with a little bit of a sidewalk down here near the Mattress Firm Building. So this creates that new connection between those two existing retail buildings. It does complete that sidewalk connection, not just here, but also continuing across Kettlin's Boulevard. There's an existing sidewalk that does continue on this side of that drive aisle and the adjacent Market Square Shopping Center. So this completes that connection as well. The sidewalk will have landscaping and brick paving similar to what was done by the Chipotle Cold Stone Building. The sidewalk is wide enough to accommodate outdoor seating, street furniture, and other accessory amenities related to, you know, the variety of possible uses that might come into these buildings. And there's additional amenity space, you know, shown here at this little hardscape area between the Chipotle Cold Stone Building and Site C, as well as in front of the Site E, there's, you know, there's a little bit of space in there. And depending on how these buildings are actually constructed at final, you know, when they come in for final site plan, there may be additional possible areas for those amenities, like outdoor seating, street furniture, and things like that. So in response, they also added this new, they also rearranged or redesigned the existing parking lot behind the Chick-fil-A building, so that it now lines up with the entrance to the parking lot with these infill sites. So it makes it a little bit easier to get in between the two parking lots and probably makes it easier for people to reach, you know, both parking lots and may encourage them to park, be able to park a little closer to these new infill sites. In the response statement, the applicant noted that there is demand for additional retail here in the Kettlin Square Shopping Center and that the, the drive-through is compatible with surrounding area. The applicant's traffic study found that there will be 42 additional trips in the peak hour, which would not have an impact on traffic. The internal traffic circulation analysis showed that the conversion of the parking lot to infill buildings will maintain the overall access to the shopping center and will still allow adequate access to the internal parking lots. The parking demand study, which accounted for the Kmart currently being vacant, found that adequate parking is available to serve the shopping center even during the peak holiday season. Staff is supportive of the application and has provided comprehensive findings in the staff analysis. And thus, staff recommends the planning commission, based upon the evidence and testimony submitted into the record and the findings presented in the staff analysis, recommend approval of schematic development plan SDP-7712-2017 to the Mayor and City Council with the two conditions included in the staff analysis. Staff is available to answer questions from the commission and the applicant's team is here as well.
Great.
And I'll turn it over.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. You touched on it, but I really want to make sure we're clear as to how the impact to parking is going to be. Now, when you say that you take into account the vacant Kmart building, so you're taking away Kmart parking because you're saying that there's no, because the building's vacant that it's not going to impact parking?
So I'm actually going to ask the applicant's engineer from Wells and Associates to come up and explain that, who he can probably explain all better than I can.
All right. Will Zaid with Wells and Associates. We prepared the parking analysis, internal circulation, and the traffic study. So to your question about Kmart, what we did was we counted the site, the parking throughout the day on a weekday and on a Saturday. And we took the total occupied square feet for the entire center and we developed a rate of parked vehicles per occupied square foot of the site. And then we scaled up those parking numbers, assuming, you know, full occupancy of the site. So we added parking for the Kmart and for the other vacant uses on-site. So we're assuming, we're assuming that that Kmart, if it were occupied, would park at sort of the same rate as the other retail is parking at. So we didn't take the spaces away, we added vehicles into our assumptions for that space.
And thank you for that, and that's why I brought it up, because that was a very big issue during the joint public hearing. And I want those that are watching to understand how that was developed, because that might, you know, still be a consideration.
And there was about 5,000 square feet of other small retail sites that we added as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Questions?
Let me ask a technical question. Oh, go ahead. I was just going to ask, my probably biggest, you know, I've got, I've got two sort of outstanding concerns with this. And one of the biggest ones still centers on the proposed drive-through. Is there projected number of, you know, vehicles per hour through that drive-through? Have you looked at that? Was that studied at all? The reason I'm asking is because that directly relates to how many cars per hour are coming across the pedestrian sidewalk and have potential conflicts with pedestrians. So have you looked at that based on your, based on your projections for what you sort of restaurant or business would go in there? You know, how many people per hour do we think were funneling through that drive-through?
I'm not sure. We'd have to have sort of a specific use, you know, it's hard to estimate that, but 10 to 12 space, 10 to 12 stacking spaces about what's available within that drive-through. And, I mean, that's, that's a pretty average number, pretty comfortable number for, you know, especially when you don't know your exact tenant, that kind of thing. We don't have an exact number, but it's probably less, if not on the order of what a regular curb cut there would be for parking from the center, if you will. So I don't know that it'll be that much more. But it would only be outbound, there would be no inbound on there, so.
Correct. But so we don't, we don't know, if you've got 12 cars stacked up, we don't have a guesstimate of how fast they're cycling through there?
They try and, they typically try and get people in and out under, you know, under a minute or two for the drive-through.
That's really not the question. The question is capacity. How many cars would cycle through there in an hour?
I don't know if I have an exact answer to that, but if you assume, you know, they could serve somebody in a minute, which would be pretty quick, you'd be looking at 60 vehicles an hour, you know, one every minute. So that would be, I would say, on the high end of what you could possibly expect.
All right. Did you have another one?
Yeah, I mean, my other, my other concern, I'm not sure if we're going to do discussion separately, because it's not really a question, it's concerns related to some of the comments that were provided, specifically to how developing this now impacts the schedule for long-term redevelopment of the site. And, you know, Kirk, maybe you have an answer to this. Do we know why, when this was proposed in 2013, what the concerns were that led the Mayor and Council and the planning commission to put an expiration date on the approval?
I'm not really sure, because that was unusual, very unusual. In fact, this, that might have been the only site, the only schematic development plan that was approved with a time limit like that, that I can, that I'm aware of. So it was very unusual. I'm not sure why that was done.
I mean, I can guess, I'd rather not, you know, guess, because obviously I wasn't there. But, you know, a lot of the public concerns, and my concerns frankly with this, have to do with how putting these buildings in place, how, you know, filling them up with tenants, generating income for the landlord, is going to infect, is going to affect the likelihood that this site gets redeveloped and when that happens. And there were some comments entered into the record from the public, specifically from DPZ and others, who made the case that, look, you're going to put income-producing properties there, so the threshold to redevelop in 10 or 15 or 20 years is that much higher because you'd have to overcome whatever revenue you're bringing from those assets. So it seems to me that if the commission was concerned about that, they'd do something like put an expiration date in the, on the SDP.
The other, I want to offer a reason, but I'll give you the context, was also very short, shortly after some of the master plan special study area work was done, it created the larger vision. So kind of in that same vein, the idea was not to necessarily support what the longer-term goal was, but, you know, allowing a forever approval against something that might ultimately be obsolete against that bigger plan in 10 years out or 15 years out or something like that. So I think, I think that's part of the motivation. But John, did you have any background on?
That was my recollection as well.
Yeah.
That was a thought of mine.
Yeah.
Are we discussing them?
I'm happy to move to discussion if you want, that's fine too. If nobody has any questions for.
Did you want the applicant to specifically respond to the question about how this would impact the long-term redevelopment? I think the applicant could definitely answer that better than I can.
Yeah, I mean, if they'd like to respond to that, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's a major concern.
Good evening. Brian Downey for the record. I think the short answer is we don't expect that it would impact our long-term plans. We, I think as we put forward in the original application, having studied the site, we've come a very clear conclusion that in terms of the implementation of the long-range plan, if you want to think of this site as three nodes, currently what was the Kmart node and then Giant and then Lowe's. The Lowe's, that one would be clearly the last one to be, for a variety of reasons, the last one to be redeveloped. And then we think about the amount of time it would take to implement the other two nodes. And then there is the interim between then and now. And one of the things that we're comfortable in, we do it in a number of sites, is to time our leases. I mean, it's, I'll call it, perhaps call it an exit strategy, or the redevelopment strategy is factored into the leases, factored into deals. So we don't, we don't go into this thinking that we're going to be painting ourselves into a corner at all. So that's our approach to it.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Questions or discussion, either way is fine. Record's closed, so. You want to jump in?
Sure. I think my main concern has to do with the master plan and how it, this does not seem to fit with the overall vision for the downtown. I think it, it does, like the applicant just explained, fit their interior, their vision or how everything is faced within the property, but I think it fails to acknowledge the street hierarchy that was outlined in the overall vision. And it puts, and prioritizes a portion of the downtown that is not, that was not intended to be either a main connection or a primary access. It gives, you know, by the merit of adding this retail, it adds traffic and it gives it a different, it really restructures and redefines a way that people are going to be experiencing this space and the overall downtown. I think in spite of the, of the evidence shown into the package, I have big concerns about the retail again as a whole and the overall context of the downtown of Kettlin's, given the current vacancy rates that the site is experiencing. I, I looked at the setbacks and I looked at, I read the explanation. I, I still feel like it's too close. I know that the box is a general build-to line. I would feel more comfortable it was set back a good, a little bit farther, but, so I didn't think that that was necessarily addressed. And then I just, I think, you know, Kettlin stands for walkability, stands for the ability for people to connect in a way that it's, that offers options. And to enable drive-through to be established in our community would be to send our, the overall downtown of this particular community into the wrong direction. So I think I'm looking at it from the context of the master plan of Kettlin's. Those are my comments.
Which I think is part of the reason it's being termed interim, why I think Phil challenged on whether or not that was something that would stand in the way of that vision at some point, which I share some skepticism about too. At a technical level, Kirk, because I don't want to get too deep into the weeds on some of the specific site planning issues, like the dimension and geometry of the drive-through, like some of the cut-throughs, some of those things. Where would we stand tonight on a recommendation for or against with details like that? Would that be something we could count on working through at site plan? Or do we have to be very specific, we have concerns about some of the way that the layout is emerging even at this, at this stage?
So in general, it can probably be handled at the final site plan. It may have some other impacts in terms of, you know, if they just, if they did shift the buildings, for example, in response, and it affected the amount of available parking, then that might have to be re-looked at as, you know, as part of the final site plan.
But there's no subdivision happening, so.
There is not.
Yeah. So we're not really vesting anything in terms of boundaries or cuts.
But I think we probably should be specific if as a commission we have concerns about things like a drive-through, like major site.
No, I agree, yeah. And I just wondered how much, how much the specificity even had.
How much detail.
Yeah, yeah. Because I'll throw in my, there's two issues to me, there's a drive-through in general and whether or not that should be here. And then I get, I get caught in arguments with, well, there's a bank, well, there's, I mean, there's some examples of where, where it happens in the city. There's certainly a bank on the Kettlin Square, drive-through bank. So if I set that aside, that's the first issue, whether we should, we should endorse that kind of inter transaction, you know, drive-through transaction, regardless of the business. The second is where it is. You know, I mean, I think if you talk me into the fact that drive-through is an okay thing to have here, whether or not we all agree on that, but then I would say, well, then there's some fundamental flaws in how it's laid out. You know, so to me, it's two issues right now. And I, I need to get through the discussion here with all of you, you know, the consensus on, I think, both of those issues. And I don't think they're, they're compiled. So that's why I'm asking, Kirk, if, you know, we essentially, I'm saying hypothetically endorse a drive-through, where then do we take it in terms of how it's laid out so it does a better job of being integrated, or whatever words we end up using to describe the implementation of it? Is that now or is that later? Is that now with some general language and later?
Right. So it certainly could be, you know, a condition, if you wanted to go that route, to say that when they come back for final site plan, that they look at redesigning it and if you could give them some sort of direction on what you're looking for, that would probably help them. So, but again, it could be more of a final site plan type issue.
Fair enough. And if buffers are part of this, just again, kind of a hypothetical way to set up discussion, how close are we on maxing what our assumptions are on parking needs here? So if it really, really comes down to a little bit more about space around some of these elements, do we have the room to move things around a bit based on parking count?
Let's see if that is on this. So if you'll give me a second, I'll bring up the cover sheet, which does have that information about the parking.
Because what all you're doing, I think the point I would make is that, given, given the proposal and, and let's assume it's interim and it doesn't interfere with the longer-term goals of the, of the overall redevelopment, there's a little bit about it that seems a bit packed in there around landscape buffer, circulation, cars crossing paths, parking right on major, what becomes the major access for the vehicular access. You know, I think it'd be loosened up or softened up a bit, but I don't know if we're close on the parking count requirements at this point.
So on their cover sheet, they do show the parking based on the current requirements of the city ordinance. And they've, they've still got 64 surplus spaces based on the city's required parking.
But that's gross, right?
Right, that's across the entire.
That does really acknowledge the more detailed parking study that looked at how you kind of assign spaces relative to the businesses that are generating the demand, right? So.
And my recollection from bringing this in, if I get this wrong, please, somebody correct me, was that the lots in the parking study, the way they were labeled, the lot right here adjacent to these between Lowe's and buildings we're talking about, at the peak time was the short, it was the most congested. I think it was something like, it was like 94% at capacity. And the spare capacity was up by Kmart and in some other places that were practically impractical for, for these, for these buildings. If I said that incorrect, correct me, but that was my recollection.
Maybe we could, if you could comment on what the assumptions are about parking distribution.
Yeah, so during the, so we adjusted for the, to look at what the site would be at the peak time here, like you said. So we assumed the full occupancy of the site, as we got to earlier, and then we adjusted that upwards to look at the peak shopping season in December. And what we came out with was around 94%. Saturday is sort of the controlling here, weekday is lower. So the Saturday at Peak Shopping Center in December was about 94% for the overall site. So that left, I think it was about 104 spaces for the overall site vacant. And, you know, our assumption is, basically, look in our accounts, we don't, you know, Kmart was empty when we counted, so we kind of have to assume, I mean, logical assumption is everybody parks as close to the storefront as possible. So that kind of leaves the site, the lot adjacent to Lowe's and then the lot adjacent to that, sort of the back ends of those, which, which butt up against sort of where the Cold Stone Creamery is. Those would be kind of the empty areas of the center during that time. Those are sort of the furthest away from the, from the major retail.
But what do you consider, what do you consider the fronts of these new buildings then?
Well, so that's, so Lot 7, we looked at Lot 7 individually. So what the numbers I just gave you were for the overall center. Lot 7, we call it Lot 7, it's the Lowe's, the Lowe's lot where these, where these would be parking. So on that Saturday, we calculated out to 101% of demand. So they would have to use some of those empty spots elsewhere. And that's just really just that one, almost just that one day of the year, if you will, when it would reach that point.
But this is, but the point I'm trying to make is, if, just kind of natural weight binding, are you assuming that the fronts of these three new buildings are facing the drive aisle, are facing the parking field between the Lowe's and these new buildings?
Facing, facing Lowe's, facing Lowe's.
So let me, let me quickly ask a question, because I'm talking about, because I'm concerned about how they actually use the space. Because I know that Lowe's, for a fact, uses a lot of parking spaces for like mulch and Christmas trees and that kind of thing out. And so are you, you, I guess you're not factoring that kind of thing in, because that's, that, I mean.
Come springtime, they're going to take that portion behind Chipotle and absorb about the money.
Right. But at least, at least that many. I mean, it's, you know, practical use, I think, is something that needs to be considered, factored in as well. I mean, do you think about things like that? Because they do do it. And it's not necessary, it's kind of around, they use it for, for extra storage and delivery of product.
Certainly seasonal, seasonal changes.
Yeah. Yeah, I know they're not supposed to, but they do.
Well, and to get to that, sort of the seasonal variations, if you go from January up to about November, you're looking at anywhere from 50 to 70% versus December, what we're talking about during the shopping center is the 100%. So during the rest of those times of the year, you know, our, the numbers that we calculated, that 101% would drop down to 70%. So if those are on 500 spaces, you know, you'd have 200 spaces based on else empty. So if they use those for the, you know, for their, you know, plants and stuff like that that they put out in the spring.
So can I real quick read from your parking report that was submitted in Exhibit 42? On page six of the study, it has a proposed parking summary adjusted to reflect peak season conditions for Lot 7, which is the lot between Lowe's and the proposed site. On a weekday, at peak demand during shopping season, it's 82% occupied with a surplus of 61 spaces. On a Saturday during peak demand, it has a deficit of four spaces and it's 101% occupied. So that's at full build-out, that's full build-out peak season.
Full build-out peak season. So that peak season number is the 100%. And I was saying for the other months, we'd estimate about 60 to 70% of this number during the peaks in those months. So that negative four, we assume that those are parked, you know, those four spaces, they're kind of absorbed into the 104 vacant spaces for the overall site.
I think the one thing to remember is that peak season in that lot is not Christmas. Peak season in that lot is when everybody's coming out in the spring to get their mulch and their stuff like that. You know, everybody shaking the snow off and coming out to clean up their houses. That's, as someone who hits that Lowe's probably once a week, that's the season when that parking lot is the fullest, is.
So to be clear, if you, whatever you just had up there, the aerial shot, I'm not sure what Exhibit 7 was, it disappeared again.
Yes, this is, this is actually from the city's online web map. But I, I highlighted what they're, what is Lot 7, which is an actual parcel over there. And you'll note that, you know, Lot 7's boundary is along Market Street or, I'm sorry, Main Street and this drive aisle, whoops, I didn't report to that. And there is some parking available, you know, in close proximity.
Where I was headed was the triangular lot across the drive aisle, which we all talked about in the earlier discussion about creating a drive aisle that crossed and connected it. You're not taking credit for that in this? You're not taking credit for that in this calculation, or are you, are you considering that some of that absorbing the, absorbing the 100 plus?
We're assuming, well, I mean, if there are vacant, if those four vacant spaces were available over there and it was a quicker walk, they would, they could park over there. But we are assuming all of the new retail will be parking in the Lowe's lot.
And staff would note that the redesign, reconfiguration of that parking lot did not actually lose any spaces, so they took, they removed five in the top and put three there, and they removed three in the bottom and put five in the bottom. So actually, the way they reconfigured it, they did not lose spaces in that lot behind Chick-fil-A.
Was there any discussion with the owner of the building, the real estate building that's adjacent to that particular lot over there, where the, just to the opposite side of the Mattress Firm, is a big real estate building, they have a number of spots that are literally right on the other side of a little barrier there? Have you had any discussions with that owner, and will there be access allowed for those spaces, or have they been calculated?
No, we have not had any discussions with that owner about that, and actually, to be honest, we probably wouldn't anticipate that, because those would be remote spaces, quite remote spaces. I think that, and as a non-traffic engineer, but as someone who's worked many years with shopping centers, we do not design for the five or six hours that this report, as a technical matter focuses on. We design for the rest of the year. I think that's essentially what we look to function. We expect that from time to time, there will be some peak hours that could be problematic. That is a good thing, in our view, because it's a thriving shopping center. I will add one thing, and I will sort of jump in on that, is that I think the, I would say that there's a very conservative estimate baked into this projection of parking, and that is that it assumes that a Kmart would park at the same rate as everything else, and large stores like, such as that, don't park at the same rate as a lot of small shops. So there's a little bit of a very conservative, I think, a very conservative assumption baked into the report, which leads to this result. I would say, as an operator, the fact we might have a little bit of very tight parking in that lot a couple of days out of the year would not be a concern to me. I mean, we're not in the business of wanting to have people turn and leave because they can't get parking spaces, so, but to go back, no, we have not, to answer your initial question, we haven't talked to any joint property owner.
But they also haven't taken credit for the triangular lot that's behind the Chick-fil-A that they're building a more deliberate pedestrian access to, so that helps in some respect. My only issue would be if you're driving down the drive aisle and you're seeing the backs of the new retail, and it is an intuitive way to think about parking and going to those. And I'm not entirely sure I'm clear about that yet either, but is it, are they two-sided? Are they, you know, what are these, what are these basic access...
I think that, I'm not, as far as the layout, we anticipate, actually, I'll jump in, that we anticipate that they'll face either out towards the main drive aisle or on the sides, but we do not preclude the possibility that some occupants will have entrances facing the large parking lot, because...
Which is fine, too, but I want to make sure this doesn't...
Yeah, which is, which is something we provide for. Yeah, we provide for.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, thank you for that, that was my, I was going to ask that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Yeah, personally, I have to agree with the gentleman who just said that, you know, parking isn't a major, my major concern. In fact, if anything, I think the fewer the spaces, the more people will be walking, hopefully, if they want something, but Lowe's is a destination.
Right.
It's not why those places, it's a driving destination. Whereas these, you know, if they are, let's say, small fast food type outlets, consistent with what we have there now with Chick-fil-A and with Chipotle and Cold Stone, people will get out, they'll walk, because they want to get to that destination, they'll get out and they'll walk a few blocks. In fact, if anything, I would, I'd love for it to spill across over to the other side of Kentland's Boulevard to make it more pedestrian-friendly. On the other hand, I do have a concern about the drive-through. I was involved with Kentland's way back, 20, 25 years ago, when we started drawing up these ideas and concepts, and the drive-through was quite, how should we say, opposed by most, for the same reason Luzzoli you mentioned. It's a walking-friendly, pedestrian-friendly type of environment, we'd like to keep it that way. And there were concerns about trash, there were concerns about overflow of cars, and so on and so forth. And right now, the way it's configured, the way I see it, it's very close to that major intersection of Kentland's Boulevard, and that causes me some concern. I may not oppose it because it is a drive-through, but I would oppose it because of the location currently where it's located. That's my concern.
I have, just at a more global level, I sort of take issue with the justification that, well, we did it somewhere else, so it must be okay. And that's, that justification's been used a couple times in this presentation, once for the drive-through and once in regards to pedestrian, a mid-block pedestrian crossing where the applicant's response was, well, the rest of the parking, or the rest of the mall is basically a free-for-all, so we shouldn't improve anything here. Just at a holistic level, I have a problem with that argument. If everybody takes that approach, nothing will ever be better. And my biggest concern, aside from the traffic of the actual, like Lloyd mentioned, where the drive-through is close to that intersection, is simply pedestrians. If we really want this to be a pedestrian mall, and you're cycling cars at whatever, you know, however many cars a minute across that with buildings on either side that block the sightlines of both drivers and pedestrians, if anybody's been to the Starbucks drive-through that's over, where's it, near, overall, Quincy Orchard?
Yeah.
Everybody pulling out of that Starbucks drive-through almost hits anybody, everybody else around there. It's horrific for drivers, pedestrians, whatever, and that's more open than what we're creating here. So that's my biggest concern, aside from agreeing that a drive-through in the Kentlands isn't quite in keeping with the whole idea of the Kentlands to begin with, is that it's really going to make for a miserable pedestrian experience. So that's, I can get over the concerns about parking and the concerns about the long-term, whether this delays long-term redevelopment. Really, the drive-through is the one concern I can't really get over.
And I would sort of bolster that discussion a little bit with the idea that Chevy Chase Bank or now Capital One, that drive-through was fully embedded internally so that it didn't affect the pedestrian. It's right there as a part of the center, an integral part of the center, but it doesn't, well, think about the stacking, the access to the stacking, it's all done in such a way that you don't push anybody across that traffic pattern as they're coming and going from the larger center, which I think is the key to doing it right, is it somehow has to be completely discreet and not cross paths with what's happening on pedestrian access. And, you know, there's creative people, a lot of creative people working in this area, there's a way to do it here, it just doesn't show up on this plan right now, I don't think.
I agree with the notion of a drive-through, I think that it's definitely the right approach. I still think that there's a bigger issue about, I'm more retail to the wrong, not in keeping with the overall master plan.
So, well, we owe the council a recommendation on that. So let's, let me tick down through the issues. Let's start with drive-through. So to kind of wrap the discussion, drive-through, okay, but not yet in the right place or designed, configured correctly. Any comments on that?
I agree.
I think that if they use demands, then it has to be concealed and reconfigured completely.
Okay, but the use is okay, just about the design?
Drive-through's okay, though, if it's concealed.
If it's concealed.
And doesn't cross, doesn't discharge across the main pedestrian.
Right.
I mean, I think that's an absolute.
Okay. I agree with you, I'm just trying to make sure we don't have anybody that's so strongly should not allow that to happen.
I mean, I think, I don't know, my preference would be, first preference would be no drive-through at all, but if it's market-driven and it has to be there, it just can't discharge across the sidewalk.
Okay, good. All right, so that's point one. The second point on parking, I'm saving the hardest for last. On the parking, it looks like we have data suggests that it's tight, it's tough, but there's a way to manage it, and there's some effort to connect some otherwise unused areas to bolster this, but is that fair, or is that...
Yeah, I think, you know, it's a lot of the circulation issues as well. I think, you know, with parking concealed behind and such tight frame between Site C and Site D, I have some concerns about how the parking circulation takes effect, but I think those are almost two separate issues.
Okay.
And I don't know how we address this, I do think there is somewhat of a flaw in the analysis based on the fact that it doesn't take into account the way Lowe's sort of arbitrarily assumes huge volumes of parking for storage of material and sales.
That's an enforcement issue.
I mean, I don't know whether that's a landlord enforcement issue or a city enforcement issue, but it's got to be addressed.
If I could jump in real quick on that, those would require staff approval applications reviewed by city staff, so obviously, if these buildings were built, we would review them in that context.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. But do they consistently, or they consistently coming forward for that?
They should be consistently coming forward for that when they do storage in the parking lot. Do they always do that? No, I would probably say, but then that's an enforcement issue.
Okay.
Have we ever conditioned that? I mean, this is not an old, I mean, this is not a new thing, so...
What do you mean?
I mean, have we ever said, you know, as far as storage is concerned, that we restrict it, or at least we have addressed it?
Yeah, we're reviewing on the, how much park is available on the site as well as circulation. There are some plans, at least on the Kmart side, that show for truck movement, and as you know, they do put some storage on that side as well.
Right, right.
So we do review to make sure that trucks can still move through the parking lot to service the back of the Kmart building.
But so there is a city code requirement somewhere that a building owner or tenant who wishes to use a percentage of their parking lot for something other than parking has to apply for permits?
Correct, because reducing the number of parking spaces per a lot, even at the temporary level.
Then it's just a matter of that being enforced.
Yeah, enforcement.
Right.
All right, so I think I've got, I think what we're hearing is consensus that we're satisfied the parking count is there, we have some circulation questions, let's be specific about those for staff to address. My personal one, just from a complete kind of academic studying arrows and movement, is that I think there's six spaces at the end of Site C, which essentially is now a main entrance into the parking field for anybody coming from that side of the site. So right now, the existing condition is there's probably four cuts in that drive aisle that gets you into the parking lot, that'll all be funneled down to one, which is that one. And with that, parking spaces on that actual little kind of shoot, you know, there's going to be people backing up, coming and going, I think, I would take a hard look at whether that really should be parked or should feel more like a, I don't want to say a main entrance, but you know, it has the, it doesn't have the conflict of cars parking, backing out and into what essentially would be a queue of cars trying to leave or coming into the site.
To be honest, I don't think that I would have any issue if that was parallel parking because of the nature of how that parks itself. I think the head-in and head-out and backing out is what I find the biggest issue with. And also the fact that they will be crossing, the opportunity to having in both directions. So now we have this bottleneck that consolidates all the traffic coming out of the big lodge and main block with something across it, so it, I think it creates...
So that's something to look at, I think, and we can address it formally in final, but I think that's the big question on circulation.
So are you saying it, it'll back in only?
No, no, I would feel better if it was parallel parking, because it had, when you parallel park, there's a different maneuvering system.
I mean, I think the reality is you'll get two, maybe three, parallel spaces there.
As opposed to the six.
Better than nothing.
You've also got a cut by the Mattress Firm and where the proposed drive-in right now would be as well, and that's another issue, because if it does stack up beyond 10 cars, you're right into that driveway right there.
I know, and that's an interesting way in, actually, that's mainly used by trucks right now.
Correct, but that's a good way in.
And if you drive the site, I would argue that's also counterintuitive where you're going. If you come in, you've got your eye on the store, you're not, you don't want to turn around and go back the other way. So it's going to be some issues, but I think, for the purposes of, I think what we're saying is the parking, the data suggests the parking would be fair, we need to look more closely at site plan and where those major access points are, and that we don't do anything to include that movement, because it's going to be more concentrated there. All right, so then, and I think we're clear about the drive-through, that we're ready to endorse the actual operational use if the market warrants it, but that the access to the drive-through and the flow out, outflow needs to really be isolated from the pedestrian traffic, is that...
I think we should preclude it from exiting to that main drive.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I think in the context of a recommendation to mayor and council, the recommendation is that mayor and council include the condition that the drive-through be reconfigured.
Right.
And with the prohibition that it does not exit onto that main road.
All right, let me take us to that question, Luzzoli brought up about retail. We have evidence in front of us on two sides on this. One is that the market really doesn't support adding more retail here, especially with vacant spaces, and we have evidence by application to do this, that there seems to be a market for it. So I think we have to fall back on what our master plan and our MXD use says is appropriate for this site. Kurt, maybe just reinforce where we are on the master plan, on the special study areas, on the Kentland's downtown study. There's three or four overlapping visions for this, I think, at this point, right?
Right, so staff would note that this particular infill site plan, schematic development plan, is really related to the original sketch plan for the shopping center, more than it is to the Kentland's master plan redevelopment, because this really isn't intended to be the redevelopment, this is intended to be this, you know, interim use until the redevelopment happens. So this is really, in some ways, you know, if you look at this in the context of a shopping center, of the shopping center sketch plan, it seems to fit in, you know, with that pretty well. And because, as the applicant has stated, you know, this won't really preclude having the long-term redevelopment, and that, you know, the applicant feels that this would be the last area of the shopping center to be redeveloped, then, you know, this is probably the appropriate place to have this interim use sort of reside, basically.
But to that argument, you know, you're reconfiguring the use of the entire shopping center and just shadowing it through, the hierarchy of the space is going to change entirely in the interim, whether we, that is the long-term vision or not. And so for it to be the original sketch one for the property against the overall vision of the city, of the master plan, then, to me, the master plan is the overall vision, that's why we invest in having a master plan, so we know where we are going to prioritize development or not. And so I just find that this is not in keeping with that, and that singly benefits the future plans of the property in isolation of the overall downtown.
So staff would note that in 2005, I believe, at any rate, at a previous time, this very similar plan was approved, and so it's, I'm not sure, I mean, other than the drive-through, it's almost the same plan, so, I mean, at that time, the council and the commission found that it was in keeping with the long-term master plan vision, so...
But that's 2005, the overall vision for the master plan was established, and it actually, the word escapes me, approved in 2009, so I think that we have to look at it from the context of what is the vision for the city and what are the things that we're trying to prioritize as a whole, rather than what benefits the immediate needs of the site or the property in isolation of everything else.
Right, I mean, I guess in some ways that, in the larger picture of the city, you know, you have to remember that there's competition always between different shopping centers, so I mean, and different retail areas, so I guess, you know, there's an overall vision of making sure that the city as a whole remains competitive, and certainly, you know, this might be helping that overall competitiveness of the city.
If you would, Kurt, just move us, though, into land use, into actual plan. I mean, I think, if we begin to, if we begin to talk about competitive markets and what depth there is for certain types of development from a market perspective, we'll get in a little trouble, because we're not really looking at evidence that addresses that.
Correct, correct.
We're looking at land use projections and master plan documents, and it would be better to root it in that than whether or not this remains competitive unless we go through another exercise to try to translate that to a land use.
Right, so do you want me to bring up the Kentland's master plan to see what that showed?
It would be the appropriate thing.
Right. Let me see what this is here. So remember that the master plan is really trying to show the vision of the final ultimate build-out, not necessarily what happens in between now and could be, you know, 50 or 60 years in the future, nobody really knows, right? So these pictures showing, whoops, I don't know why it keeps... So these, these pictures showing, whoops, I don't know why it keeps moving. Every time I touch the mouse, I apologize, it seems to move when I don't want it to.
I think if you say the arrows, it will probably.
Yeah, that, that might.
Page for page.
Well, now the arrows aren't working. So at the, the end of the, the, the plan, there are these two Shuret plans that kind of show how sort of a midterm design could happen and lead to this longer-term design. So Plan A is this midterm and then Plan B is the longer one.
You can zoom in on just the image?
Um, yes, and hopefully it won't skip the page again. So this is the existing Lowe's, this is the existing Kmart. Yeah, while this is sort of existing retail, you can see in this midterm plan, it's, it's sort of showing that being replaced and then being extended here, similar to what is being proposed with the infill sites here.
Okay.
Not exactly, but similar. And then the long-term, let's see if we can just do page down. And then the long-term, oh, I didn't go where I thought it would, apologize. And then the long-term, it obviously becomes much more dense. And, and this is somewhat conceptual with
Right.
what would really happen there. So even this plan does show that it's, you know, while there is this idea of an ultimate build-out, there is sort of this idea that you have, you know, things happening in between the ultimate and today. And I think Rob's gonna sort of add on to that.
Yes, so again, these two Shuret plans are what was envisioned. That isn't actually the adopted plan. I think one of the things that's being lost and is discussed in the findings, the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan makes very clear in both cases, for both sides, that interim development will occur. Because of that, essentially this application, much as we'll hear later with Kimco, almost defaults back to the previous master plan. So that's sort of where we're going. So the difficulty that we understand from the public is, you know, mixing the long-term Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan with rectifying with these interim conditions that don't really, aren't really reflected in the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan. And again, as Kirk sort of mentioned, this, this development was essentially envisioned and built in. So that's why the findings that were made by staff reflect back to the original sketch plan, reflect back to the previous master plan because that's sort of the guidance it's falling under. And we make clear again that it does comply with the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan because it is one of the interim conditions that was discussed to maintain vitality for the existing thing until such time redevelopment occurs. I think what has to be understood is regardless of what the recommendation is, if these pad sites don't exist, that is not gonna speed up the long-term redevelopment of the Lowe's block. So at times, we're even reading in the comments, people begin to think it's, you know, a rob Peter to pay Paul situation when it's not. It's apples and oranges. It, it's doing something that's the current market trend now to keep existing inline retail centers viable a, a, and, and last over the next coming decade. So in 25 years, you have the ability to redevelop to the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan.
Well, I have two initial reactions to that argument, Rob. I think like they, you know, yes, you're diverting back to the previous master plan in order to fulfill the interim version. I don't think that, I personally, I'm not reading it as this is going to take away from the Kmart redevelopment at all. I'm concerned that there is current vacancies within the overall downtown and this cannibalizes on that, on that retail right now. And then there's the issue of the fact that, you know, you are restructuring the way that the downtown functions as a whole because you're adding retail. And the, that basically contradicts the overall vision of the downtown.
Ruzella, can you explain what you mean by downtown? Because I think we've got three separate issues here. We've got Soul properties, we've got Kimco property, and we've got the downtown, which I think you're referring to.
No, I, I, I see downtown as a whole. I see Soul, Kimco, and Main Street as a whole. I think, I'm not looking at it as, that's why I feel like this, this proposal isolates itself from Kimco and Soul and it pretends to restructure the way that we're going to function.
So Rob, go, or Kirk, go to the, the plan that was the second version, where it built in the block a little bit more.
Okay.
And so obviously, when we were looking at all this, people just sort of come up on the main screen.
I, I have an issue with seeing this plan because it's not what the approved master plan is.
I, I concur. I mean, but again, this was something, because that's why it was incorporated, because this was something to help create the understanding of what was envisioned for those interim conditions. So again, this isn't the long-term vision. I think we're all in agreement with that because that precedes it. But they do wanna show that through the Shuret process, these were the sort of interim conditions that were envisioned for the commercial district.
The previous drawing is an interim vision, but what we're looking at, it's not an interim vision. If you're thinking that this is going to be redeveloped as an interim vision, I think that there's a great deal of investment that would have to have to in order to those blocks to be interim.
Well, I guess, or let me, let me finish up. Where I was going with this diagram is, in fact, it's a diagram and, and, you know, no one would mistake that for a building designer even necessarily, a final, you know, layout. But what it suggests is that we all had the imaginative, imagined that all of the roads through the shopping center would become more like roads and less like shopping center driveways, which meant that stuff would hug it. You know, there'd be a reason to walk down them and, and, and use the businesses that were along them. Whether that looked like live-work units from 20 years ago or looked like, you know, the new virtual reality stores of 20 years from now, whatever they are, something happens to, to activate the streetscape and become a place that people wanna go and, you know, either shop or enjoy, or whatever it is.
And that's precisely my argument. I think that we're activating the wrong portion of the, of the downtown. We're taking away from what we already have in order to add more frontage.
So the reality in all this is that this is a vision that's been on the table for a while, the idea of activating these streets within this, this square. As it happens, it's owned by a separate and distinct entity then who controls other parts of the downtown, right?
Right.
And, and what we have to do then is begin to think about, we don't like it in isolation, we want a holistic look. We, we try to put these plans out there to create that. Sometimes they come close, sometimes they don't. Sometimes they get, you know, a little bit of a, of a, of a gesture towards it that's not all the way there. I'm encouraged that something can happen here that begins to look like this, that doesn't, doesn't look like a complete, you know, flaunting of what was originally thought about to, you know, activate the streets here. I'm not finding it necessarily though contradictory to having that happen elsewhere or happen at a larger scale as this begins to evolve. That's, that's what I'm, I'm still struggling with. I don't think this undermines the larger vision or even undermines this happening more holistically.
And again, if I may, as Kirk mentioned in his staff analysis, I think one of the things that's sort of been inferred that wasn't the intent is the goal of this is not to create a commercial street. The applicant came forward based upon comments made to improve pedestrian connectivity.
Right.
And as was clearly mentioned, and even in the discussion that Commissioner Roych brought up earlier about where is the frontage, as was discussed, you know, it's very likely, you know, it's, it's possible all of these are offices. They could have large windows onto that drive-out, but the main entrance could be near the surface lots. The goal was not to create Main Street. Main Street is, you know, the, the live-work units are already there, you know, there's no guarantee. I mean, during the public hearing, there was, seemed to be a lot of discussion that it was envisioned that all of this is gonna be a new restaurant row and a commercial thing. It's not long enough, first of all. We're talking three pad sites of at most 16,000 square feet, so we're not creating, you know, the Miracle Mile, you know, the Golden Mile.
Rob, here's what we need. You know, when we finish up a recommendation or an approval, but in this case, a recommendation, we have to cite the foundational document and the foundational policy that we're basing it on. And I think we're, we're getting a little bit off track here on that. So make it clear, what is the foundational document to, to make findings?
As made in the findings, the actual master plan, the finding required, and Kirk can jump in and actually pull it up in his staff analysis, was there were two things cited in the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan. It was cited that it calls for interim conditions and acknowledges interim development. And therefore, we took that to mean especially based upon the previous approval that the guiding master plan document and sketch plan was the previously approved master plan and sketch plan document. Because this is not implementing the long-term vision.
Because the Shuret is really just an adjunct to that.
This is not, the goal of this is not to implement the long-term vision of the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan.
That ignores completely the current conditions. It just, it says, you know, we're going to fall back to the previous vision for the master plan, but it takes, it basically says, in spite of whatever retail or circumstances are going on, vacancies are going on in Main Street, we're going to move over with more retail or more office or more space for, for use.
But, but just as you mentioned, vacancies on Main Street by, by potentially recommending not approving these pad sites does not mean vacancies on Main Street will get backfilled. It's not a one, it's not that.
And I'm very clear on that, but I still don't believe that restructuring our downtown and adding more, more frontage would necessarily help anything either.
I'd have to dispute that. I'm sorry, I, I really would. I would say that there's an economic imperative here. There's an economic engine that we're being given here. And I think it may not be the locomotive that's gonna pull the train, but it's, it's got an engine to it. And three pad sites, regardless, we don't know what's gonna go in, regardless, is going to inject some new life into an area that right now we have none.
But I think, Lloyd, I drove that, that intersection today. I, in the two seconds that I was there, there was a near collision of some, of two drivers. I think we're adding a density in a place that it just don't, does not need it.
But it is an urban environment. I mean, that is, the Kentland's vision is an urban environment. Congestion is gonna be part of our urban environment. And I have no problem, I mean, if we're gonna fix the driveways and the drive-throughs, this is still the SDP. We, we're still gonna get to see that circulation coming up in more detail at the next round. Let's go with what we've got, let's see what it is up.
So Rob, more time. Give me, in no uncertain terms, very clearly, for everyone to hear, the master plan section that we're gonna, we're gonna cite when we.
If you could bear one second. Kirk, if you could please go to your staff analysis and pull up the findings.
Okay, so here's the area master plan. So.
Should be one of the earlier ones.
Kirk, I believe it's your second finding, subsection A of that. I also saw another one, which I'll look at, which was page 4.4, so I'll remember that. So one, one finding was in, it would stop.
These should be listed in the findings that you presented to the council and commission.
Well, it references this in one of the findings, which was.
A plan for incremental change.
Right. Courage Development Sports' long-term vision was, well, fulfilling short-term needs. So page 4.4 of the adopted Kentland's Boulevard Commercial District Master Plan. So that last piece there, plan for incremental change.
And that.
That was one of them, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess I was looking more for the, the specific land use, the specific adopted master plan language. Just to be clear to everybody here, I, I don't know if you have that cited or easy to get to, but.
But, sorry, I don't wanna, I don't wanna further muddy the waters, but I'm looking at that Kentland's Boulevard Commercial District Plan that was Exhibit 23 in the, in the SDP or in the initial application. And on, under section 4.22, it deals with the midterm and long-term recommendations for each block in that study area. This is Block G. Midterm recommendation, build potential additional structured parking above surface lot. That's the midterm recommendation. Long-term recommendation, major opportunity for redevelopment while protecting the Kentland's Boulevard corridor and reinforcing Main Street shopping experience. So that's the specific midterm and long-term recommendations in the Kentland's Boulevard Commercial District Special Study Plan that was provided with this packet for this block. Unless I'm, you know, reading it cross-eyed.
No, and, but I, I think that becomes, if that's where we're gonna pin this to, then we need to talk about that language. I'm just really trying to drive to which, which component of the master plan are we gonna make findings on?
I, I understand. And, and again, it's to clear up. The first finding required under the MXD is that the plan is substantially in accord with the approved sketch plan. So again, what we did was that sketch plan, as page 11 of the staff analysis, goes back to Z262A, which is based upon the 88 master plan, which is also referenced under the next one, under purposes and objectives of the zone, which references the laborhood for land use plan of the 1988 master plan.
Master plan, right.
So those are the connections. I understand Commissioner Wessel's comments, but again, to be clear, the master plan is a guide and it's the intent, and that was not a special condition. So it does not carry the weight of law, because if that's the case, then we won't see any interim things anywhere in Kentland.
That's right.
And that, that's gonna be the decision. So if the recommendation for this is based upon that, I think that the same, the same level has to be held later during your site plan.
And, and Rob, I'm not, I went through this exercise that John's talking about when I read through this packet.
No, I understand.
Trying to find, follow the bouncing ball to what we're basing our findings on. And it wasn't clear. But I mean, that, that makes, your explanation makes sense.
The Kentland's Commercial District Study, whatever the formal title is now, how is it, what force does it have in this discussion right now?
Again, it lays the groundwork for opportunities for these infill things. It is the guiding thing, should solve Kimco, individual owners on Main, you know, the live-work units wanna come in and, and begin implementing the long-term vision as discussed in the actual plan, not the Shuret plans that he showed. So it's the sketch plan. But just as, as we've done anyplace else, people can come in with sketch plans, but that doesn't mean we don't allow them to re-lease, we don't allow them to do other things. Because once again, sketch plans function similar to concept plans in that they don't expire and they don't grant entitlements. They lay the groundwork under the MXD for preliminary subdivision under the SDP.
Okay, so stop right there. So then, what it also does, or what the, the special study, or tell me again the title, I'm sorry. The Kentland's Commercial District.
It's the District Master Plan. Is that, that's the one, you know, we're, we're looking at in that the previous sketch?
I think that there's a syntax problem. I think there's a problem with calling it a master plan when it's in fact not an adopted master plan. I think that's, that's.
It is the adopted master plan.
But what I'm saying is that the sketch plan, well, okay, fair enough. But it doesn't preclude or it doesn't nullify any of the existing sketch plan. It doesn't suggest that there should be something, which has got, which has, which has us hung up right now. Is that what we're really saying is, it doesn't comport with the master plan. But what it does is it carries forward almost a by-right status by, by an existing sketch plan. I mean, I think that's, that's the better way to, to describe this because it, frankly, if we had to make findings on the master plan, then we'd, we'd have a harder time. But the reality is, we're really looking at an adopted sketch plan, which as you've described, doesn't expire, doesn't, is that, am I getting at it now a little better?
Yes, and, and remember, one of the findings of the sketch plan, the very first finding of the sketch plan under MXDs, does it comply with the master plan? So that's why it's, it's the trickle-down backwards.
Don't take us in a circle here.
No, no, I'm trying, I understand it's confusing enough.
No. Well, it's not confusing, but I think, I think you need to be very clear about where, where the foundation document is for this, this finding. Because I don't think that's been clear until just about now. The.
It just boggles my mind. Why do we have a master plan?
We have the master plan because, as, as was discussed by these other property owners, as was done in the block with Kmart, the long-term sketch plan, that is the master plan that's gonna guide that document. But again, that doesn't mean you can't, all, you can't take something that is essentially a long-term vision and basically say, with, with it not being a special condition and not having gone through the special condition process during the master plan process, to say you can't do anything else except what's in this book. If it was a special condition, it carries the weight of law, and then we, they wouldn't have a choice, but that wasn't done.
And in fact, as the clause it says, allow for interim development, right?
I think, and let me, I think what I'm understanding here and where the difficulty is, is because the sketch plan for this site was approved, you know, almost two decades before the current master plan was approved, the master plan serves to allow us to evaluate somebody who comes in with something different than what the sketch plan is and say, hey, this complies with the master plan. It's bigger, it's better, it's, it's in compliance with where we wanna go. But it doesn't, the master plan doesn't go back and retroactively limit someone from building what was on their sketch plan that was approved. So they, they have an approved sketch plan.
That's how I'm interpreting this too.
They have an approved sketch plan from 1988, and so that's what we've gotta judge it upon. If they came in and said, we wanna do something totally different than our sketch plan, but look, it's in compliance with our master plan, that's when the master plan would come into effect.
Essentially what occurred in the block to the north, the, the exercise we went through. We are beginning to put into place, implementing the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan, so we'd like to do a new sketch plan. But, but just to, to bring it back to life as an example, there is a sketch plan now, but that doesn't mean, you know, if a shop owner that's in that block leaves, that they can't go ahead and release that because the, the master plan says that's to be structured parking. because the, the master plan says that's to be structured parking. That, that's not how it works, you know. The rubber begins to hit the road with preliminary subdivision.
I think we understand that.
Okay. So our findings, just, just to be, and I, I appreciate the discussion, because I think we had to do a little bit of homework here on the fly to make sure we were clear. Sketch plan, essentially, this fulfills the sketch plan. We do have, we do have serious concerns with the implementation of the drive-through, and that, that, that cannot stand as drawn, that needs to come back with a revision during final, based on our conversation.
And I believe Commissioner Wessel was crafting a condition, so we would like to make sure Kirk has clear language on that for, should, whenever you make your motion for a recommendation.
I think we also said that the circulation into and out of these parking zones that are now more limited need, need more work for clarity and visibility and flow, right?
Correct.
What I'm sensing is that, based on what we've just discussed, I think we need to move forward with the recommendation to approve the SDP amendment based on the findings that the, the governing document in place right now essentially allows it, or, or even promoted it, right, as a, as a way to develop that edge of the streetscape. And maybe with a little bit of discussion from staff and our condition, that we, we also recognize it's truly interim. It doesn't, it doesn't fulfill the, the long-term vision of the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan, but it does move them closer to the, to the complete picture that was envisioned in the initial sketch plan. Is that, is that fairly accurate at this point? Anything else we need to make sure we address?
Yeah, I mean, my, my only, and I'm just going to say it, I don't think it's a, I don't think it would be a condition, but, you know, we've talked about this interim, and I think, Rob, you mentioned, oh, for the next decade or whatever. This application talks about build-out taking a decade. So it will likely be interim for two decades or, or longer. So it, there's no, there's nothing that guarantees this is an interim condition. It's an act of faith. It's an act of faith that the market will evolve to the point where this will be an interim condition. There's nothing that says this won't be here for 40 years. So it's, it's sort of the nature of planning, it's the nature of what we're doing, but we're putting our professional hats on and saying, yeah, we think this will be an interim condition.
Kmart's an interim condition.
Anything's an interim condition. But it just depends on what your definition of interim is. It's not for us to debate, I'm, I'm just, you know, it's, I think it's a valid point.
Well, but the other way to think about it too is, the sketch plan has its limits. It, it has an edge, it has a boundary, and this, and we're up against it right now. So it's not as if there's going to be more of this past the edge of this, this initial plan. So it's interim in that it doesn't fulfill that longer-term view, but it also isn't, isn't the, the pattern for how everything is going to redevelop either, right?
The sketch plan we're judging this against never expires. So, so...
That's for a different night. I mean, that's, that's an issue, but that's, that's in fact the truth. That's in fact the truth.
I think...
So how do you want to do it, four conditions?
No, I, I think, to your point, and I'm sorry, I will say this and, and hold my peace after that. But I think, if, as an interim condition, it stands to redefine the downtown as a whole, because it could potentially remain and add a whole different condition than what it's envisioned for the downtown. And that's why I think it's so important to look at it from this optics.
So there was, there was an expiration date on the last SDP, right? We can do that again.
You can recommend that staff would warn the pitfalls of that, because arbitrary dates do not recognize market conditions. So that, that's not the way development occurs. So that you're well within your rights to recommend that. If you, if you put an end, and the council adopts it, that's fine, but we may be back here at another point.
So be it. What is, what was the term of the last one?
Five years. And that's why we felt it was, you know, even in hindsight now looking, it was very unrealistic to expect four pad sites. To be, you know, define the lease, work the agreements, and have it be built.
The market's there?
According to the package that we've received, there is, if I misread it, they believe that they can fill these spaces, and that there's a market demand right now. So I don't know why five years would be such a holdup, or...
Actually, they mentioned in their letter 10 years for full build-out. So if you wanted to do a term, you know, you could do 10 years. And again, going back to the discussion about, to Commissioner Wessel's point, we just heard the applicant mention, they're viewing their shopping center in three different sketch plans. They, they clearly announced, in the one that was just approved, that that was potentially 25 to 30 years. We haven't even seen the sketch for Giant, and we know that this block is the last. So 10 years very much could be interim, because in their discussions with the original sketch plan, they said it could be 40 years to 45 years for complete build-out. So...
I, I see the pitfalls of, I see the pitfalls of putting an expiration date on it, because the economy could go in the toilet next year, and five years could go past, and everything just slides out.
And candidly, that's what's delayed the Kentland's Commercial District Master Plan, because no sooner was it adopted than we had the recession. So while people go, you know, it's been nine years. Well, it really hasn't. We had two years where there was no, nothing going on anywhere.
But putting the five-year cap also allows us to revitalize the need for this interim vision in a mar, in a different market. Should it not be built?
I guess what I come back to is, we have a sketch plan, and unless we're going to pass new regulations to expire all pending sketch plans, we would still have an existing sketch plan that's been approved that we're judging this against, in two years, or five years, or 10 years.
Yes, that would be, that's a, that's a legal level thing, that we would have to have some, some major changes to our process, which I don't want to talk about tonight. Seven years, 10 years, put a term on it. I mean, I, I, I think the, the issue there is going to be at least a stronger... This discussion has to happen again, right, instead of it just sort of going on forever with nothing, nothing in particular happening. On the other hand, SDP doesn't really give anybody a site plan to build something, so it could end up coming back once a people is real anyway, for site plan. So I, I'll defer to the commissioner. Do you want to, do you think?
I, I support a five-year cap again.
Nothing.
What's that?
Nothing. I would, 10 years, five years, whatever the council wants to go. I, I have no, no axe to grind on this one. I, I think it should be open-ended, quite frankly.
But, you know, in my mind, if the, if the idea is to look at this as an interim, to put a five-year cap ensures us that it would be built as soon as possible, and that it will enable the rest of the... To move forward. If it's not, if the market is not there, then in five years, we'll revitalize the need to establish an interim vision for the overall master plan.
The, the reality is, the sketch plan's going to drive it.
Yes.
So it, it may be more appearance than, than effectiveness to put a, put a cap on it. That, when I, when I, when I hear this really spelled out more clearly with the, what's enforced with the sketch plan, and the potential that it would ever be expired, or, or, and that would just be a fight that I don't think anybody would want to take on. So, you know...
This will set a precedent with other development that may come through. And I don't want to put a precedent, I don't want to set a precedent with this.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I don't know what good it does. I, I brought it up to really ask the question of the discussion. I don't see a role in putting a term on it. It didn't seem to have any effect last time.
It did. I mean, it, it, it's allowing us to look at it from a different perspective.
But unfortunately, a perspective that's not supported, unfortunately, it's a perspective that's not supported by the regulations and what we're reviewing against. I don't disagree with any of the discussion here, but at the end of the day, we're hamstrung by what we're reviewing this application against. And if the code and the legal, you know, position we're in is we're reviewing it against the sketch plan, that's not going to change in a five, with a five-year expiration. I mean, that's, if that was different, I'd be all, I'd be 100% behind everything we've talked about.
I'm feeling, I'm feeling kind of defeated on that front too. I think that's sort of the fact of the matter, is that we've got a fairly solid foundation we really can't alter. Now, we can judge it against the things we've talked about tonight, like the drive-through, like the position of the buildings. We do need to push that a little harder for, you know, assuming it does go forward and isn't going to be there. It will be there a while, we don't want anything haphazard to happen. So are you comfortable moving forward now, based on the explanation from the staff? Are you, any more discussion about that?
I think if the majority of the commission feels that way, I, I'm still abstaining.
Okay. Danny, any, any concerns, any issues?
We beat it to death.
What's that?
We beat this to death.
Phil, you, you had a recommendation for the condition?
Yeah, my recommendation for the one condition related to the drive-through is that we, obviously, we recommend approval to the mayor and council, but the condition would be that they condition their approval on... How I add this word?
You had it something along the lines of the applicant to revise the layout, so the drive-through, ingress and egress points do not cross pedestrian walkways.
Yep, yep.
So, so it would be something along the lines of, add final site plan.
No, they can, they can have, you know, this is, you, you can have the trigger before final site plan, or you can have them try to amend before signature's set on the SDP, but...
I think our goal, I think we want to be explicit, and I think the applicant deserves some explicit direction on this from us and the council, that, that we, we do not suggest that the council accept a plan that has a drive-through crossing the pedestrian sidewalk in any shape or form.
Exactly.
I can, I can live with that.
So that's, that's the, that's, that's the fundamental recommendation. Does that make sense? Is that good enough to craft into a Kirkwood, thank you?
Right, so it'd be prior to the mayor and city council final action, the applicant must revise the plan to...
Well, it's, it's a condition that's for the mayor and city council to consider.
That's why that's the difficulty.
No, no, it's our, see, I think we're recommending for them to put that condition in there. It's up to them to decide whether they want to bring it back, or send it back.
So maybe from a procedural standpoint, it would make sense, with, with the understanding, because we, we can obviously explain to council what this discussion was, and we can flesh out, as we've done with the CPCs, about what the discussion of the planning commission was to make more clear to the council. Maybe we do make it a final site plan, so it's understood that if this, whenever this plant, final site plan for this site comes in, this is the expectation the planning commission is looking forward to. The difficulty comes is, if they approve this with the condition, they really can't sign the resolution, because they don't sign the SDP. So what are we delaying?
You lost me on that.
Once again, it's procedural, so you're making a recommendation to the mayor and council to add this condition. And if the condition is, prior to any SDP approval, what they're going to do is policy discussion, and, and talk about it, and if that's the case, then they're not actually approving the plan. And, and if it, it doesn't kick back to you, it would kick back to council.
No, it would have to be approved as SDP with a condition.
So this is why, if the trigger then...
Whether it goes to preliminary plan or goes to final site plan, that's...
I think final site plan would be best, because obviously, the, the planning commission is more attuned to what they're looking for the change to be.
And, and the reality is, you know, the safest, the safest thing to do would be to do a preliminary plan. We didn't necessarily require it, but, you know, applicant should probably get something done before final that resolves all this, right?
Yeah, obviously, there'd be discussions. I mean, this is...
So to be, so we have now three conditions.
I think, you know, I think it was spelled out, and it's not very clear in the, in the overall discussion, but that the fronts of the buildings would be either on the main drive or the side, and that secondary entrances will be to the back. I think that's something that if I was to live with retail there, has had to have...
I understand, but, but again, as we mentioned, there is a high possibility that two of these pad sites may have no retail. So if it's offices, and you're parking in the surface lot...
Okay, this is an architecture, like, so the point is, even if it's a, if it's a practice of some kind of professional office, their front door, their presence on the street would be on the street, not with their back turned. Because there's always a back door to those buildings. If it ends up being two fronts, that's fine.
That's the only thing, the way it sounded like the track we were going was, the only primary entrance can be on the driveway. And that's not necessarily how things may function, based upon the, the tenant that comes in.
Fair enough. But we expected to address the street, one way or the other.
That's fine.
Okay. And I, I don't know if that's a condition, or that's just narrative for the...
I mean, the, the design guidelines do discuss, you know, trying to create four-sided architecture, and the applicant mentioned that as well, so that even if there wasn't an entrance on the drive aisle, it would still be architecturally, you know, a, a high enough standard to, to hopefully make it nice.
Well, that's exactly what I would like to avoid. I would like to avoid it being a four-sided architecture that, like, pretends to be something that it's not. I think the menu, the main access should try to be either on the sec, on the side, or the crunch, not towards the, the parking lot.
I, I would add that that's probably more of a final site plan concern, and I think making the note at this time, and then knowing, then not knowing what the final use of those buildings are going to be, let's maybe review that at that time.
So it's part of the narrative, it's not necessarily a condition at this point.
Yes, let the record reflect it.
Good, no, okay. Anything else? Anything else? All right, so we've got, are you clear on the three conditions?
I'm clear on the one condition. What was the other?
The other two that you had...
There's two that you proposed in the staff analysis, and then it was added.
Understood, understood. So one additional recommended condition.
Is that, is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that, then, is there a motion, please? And again, this is a recommendation from the mayor and council.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission recommend, based upon the evidence and testimony submitted into the record and the findings presented herein, recommend approval of schematic development plan SDP 7712-2017 to the mayor and city council, with the three conditions as written to the record.
Second.
So move in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
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 I'm saying.
So that is 401. Thank you. Good work. Top work. That's good work. All right, next up is a second recommendation for SDP-7716-2017. Cow Atlantic Homes, a schematic development plan on the Johnson Properties Residential Development for 106 single-family homes in a 1.25 acre park on approximately 14 acres of land in accordance with annexation X-7067-2015 in the MXD zone. It looks like, Rob, you're, you're setting down...
Yes, good evening. I did not expect to...
Let's go to another contentious project.
As mentioned, this is the planning commission recommendation for SDP 7716-2017. Just to begin by guiding you to the site, once again, this is the undeveloped parcel that was, oh, this is really sensitive. I will follow the up and down. The area highlighted in red, this was a former nursery, so it's basically lawn with some hedgerows that were planted as windbreaks. And it's at the opposite across from Quince Orchard High School, and close to the intersection of Quince Orchard Road and Darnstown Road. So with this SDP, the design and development were in accordance with the X-7067-2015 sketch plan and annexation agreement. The specific terms are a lot, and they were included in both the preliminary background report and the staff analysis, including copies of both actually included in the record. The plan proposes 106 single-family homes on approximately 14 acres of land, and the breakdown is 26 detached, 80 townhomes, and a 1.25 acre park that is a public park that was a requirement under the annexation agreement. So this isn't just solely for this community, it's for the whole surrounding area.
And to be clear, as a public park, who maintains and owns it?
The HOA will be maintaining it. So on your screen right now is the sketch plan, so you can basically see the layout. It is basically functioning with a ring road of, of public roads. The park was centralized. This is super sensitive, wow. And breaking down the blocks, so you can see that. So here's the actual plan that's presented at the public hearing, and it really hasn't changed at all since then. The 26 single-family detached homes are three and a half stories in height, this again is another term of the annexation agreement. And the four-story, the townhomes are four stories, again, requirement of the annexation agreement. They are divided into three sections, 18, 20, and 24-foot wide townhomes. The residential density is 7.6 units per acre. Context-sensitive design-wise, the single-family detached homes are located along the northern and western boundaries, and this is backing on to existing single-family detached homes in the surrounding community. And of note, if I can move this without jumping the screen, this area is a forest conservation area, so it's an additional buffer, as is this. And yes, it jumped too. The northern portion includes eight units, and the western edge has 18. The townhomes are divided amongst 11 sticks, and are sited through the three central blocks, and this is sort of increasing density as it backs on to the commercial. Each of the sticks are served by private alleys, as shown on the sketch plan. And the required park area, again, as with the sketch plan that you saw, is centrally located and sited along the spine road linking Nursery Lane to Maryland 28. And again, of note, as we mentioned during the public hearing, an eight-foot path has been put along, adjoining Nursery Road, I mean, that spine road connecting through, just to increase bicycle and pedestrian safety linking to that park. So the joint public hearing was held for the application on October 16th, 2017. And on the screen, the six bullets are, are really the main issues that were raised during that public hearing. The two northernmost proposed lots, parking in the community, the connecting aisle from the residential to the signalized intersection in Safeway, the potential future northern connection, overall pedestrian and vehicular circulation around the property, and the name of the proposed community. The planning commission's record closed at 5:00 PM November 22nd, and there are currently 74 exhibits in the record. So I'm going to go one by one. As part, the applicant submitted into the record a response to all of these issues. Again, as I mentioned, there, there really isn't any real visible changes to the physical site plan, so it's more addressing these issues. So the two lots, so the two lots in question, the applicant, and this is part of their response, performed a distance, exhibited a distance study. So the two units of note, eh, gosh, are... So the two, uh, units of note, eh, gosh, are here and here. So of note, it is a rear elevation fronting the existing side elevation, and the distance is 35 feet and 46 feet. Upon their analysis, if you know the existing condition, this is a front elevation facing onto the rear of the same unit, and it's 47 feet. Over on the other side of this little, for lack of a better term, almost cul-de-sac, is another front elevation that's basically facing a rear elevation, that's 42 feet. So the distances here are actually in keeping with sort of the existing, which was one of the conversations. And, and of note, you know, as included in the staff analysis, the applicant has done a landscape plan, so there is going to be a planted buffer of large shade trees, coniferous trees that will grow quicker, so it's there. Staff, in the staff analysis, and I know because it was small, it was sort of difficult to see, we began to look at comparably aged and designed communities here in the city. Exact same context, this is West Riding, 38 feet. Washingtonian Woods, 38 feet. And Orchard Hills, 40 feet. There's a lot more examples, but we just wanted to pull out three to show this, this isn't an anomaly. This, this planning context of a rear fronting on a side, basically at a curve, occurs throughout the area. So not only is, you know, the distance is not in keeping with the existing communities, i- it's not even an outlier even within the city, with some of these older Euclidean, like, R90 zone properties. Again, we didn't want to bring in the MXD, it's a whole different ballgame with MXD on MXD, so... Moving on to parking, um, the question was raised, just because there was concerns, was there enough? Um, included in the staff analysis was, you know, this overall parking chart that breaks it out by block. I want to make everybody aware, the annexation agreement requires a minimum of 212 driveway and garage spaces. So basically, what the annexation agreement said was, every unit is to provide two parking spaces, and every parking space in the garage counts as one space. So unlike the parking ordinance where it counts as a half, it counts as a whole. So 212 minimum, actually provided is 408. So when you break it down, just off-street, the annexation agreement further just said, you know, let's look at some overflow parking in the community to be determined at SDP. That's where we are. So what they proposed, outside of the 11 spaces dedicated to the public park as per the annexation agreement, which by the way only required 10, they have provided 63 on-street parking spaces, which basically equates almost to .6 spaces for every unit. So if you did the math all the way across, you know, it's, it's, every unit has four and a half spaces available to them. So, uh, from, from planning staff, as we mentioned, you know, we, we support this. We think there is sufficient parking for this community.
Okay, so, um, and I'm not sure, you said it directly, but the driveways for all of those garages are...
20 feet in length, so everything is a two-car driveway.
And, and that's including the sidewalk, or beyond the sidewalk?
Behind the sidewalk.
So, so graphically, if you imagine, nobody's taking credit in the parking council for parking cars on the driveway. Right, I mean, that's extra essentially. If you put two cars in the garage, you could put two cars in the driveway.
That's why I was saying, there, that's why it, with the minimum of 212, would be assuming, outside of the 18-foot units, which only have a one-car garage, every other unit has a two-car garage. So they basically fulfilled the requirements under the annexation agreement just with the garage. However, every unit on here has a 20-foot driveway, and with the exception of the 18, 18-foot units, has a two-car driveway. So every unit has four units, you know, four park, full parking spaces on lot with no conflicts.
Right, 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 okay.
Moving on, as, as I mentioned, was the drive aisle connection. So I'd like to remind, as part of this application, the new connections are, you know, extending, connecting into Nursery Road to the north, a right-in, right-out to the south, leading into Maryland 28. The drive aisle, which is this red dot, which leads to the signalized intersection at the Safeway entrance, which allows left and right turning movements, and then the blue is a few, proposed future northern connection. So starting with the red, the drive aisle one, the picture is included in the staff analysis, shows the existing condition between the Safeway and the existing, um, gas station. And again, as discussed in the annexation agreement, it, it states that, you know, they have to provide safe access that, you know, that staff, everybody feels comfortable with, but they don't have to become a formal road till essentially that gas station redevelops. And you can see the topographic issues and the wall. So the cross-section below shows how they're going to approve it, uh, improve this. So obviously, proposed retaining wall, where they can, two 10-foot lanes, which is the standard, um, a planting strip, a six-foot sidewalk, which allows two people to walk side by side, and part of this is to allow students to get to Quince Orchard High School through safe conveyance, a- and then obviously, a space before you get to the wall of the Safeway. So they provided both the plan view and the cross-section view, so this is sort of there. Uh, again, staff supports this, um, it, it does do the safe conveyance.
What's that total? Because I couldn't read it.
Which total, I'm sorry?
The total width.
Forty-five.
It's 45?
Yes.
It says plus or minus.
Yeah, okay.
So you'll get a little bit, that's, I guess, based upon the shifting of the retaining wall and things like that. So, uh, again, one of the comments, and it was raised by the commission, why isn't this a full road? Th- this is the obstacles, this is why that annexation agreement term was written in. So, uh, obviously, the goal for all of us is redevelopment of the commercial site, where this actually can be a full, complete road on both sides. Um, the northern connection, what was brought up, and, and the two photos that were exhibited...
Can I go back? I just, uh, I didn't know if you were finished there or not. But I think we also were looking at how the, so if you come out of the, I'm going to get my north and south backwards here, but you're coming out of the neighborhood in behind the gas station, you're going to make a right turn onto what essentially is now the drive aisle head to the, to the shopping center.
So you're coming from, using this diagram, you're coming from this direction out of the community...
Right.
And making the turn there.
If, in that case, what's the, what is the level of improvement at the intersection between what essentially is the driveway from the neighborhood, right, up alongside the end of the Safeway building? When it intersects the existing road, now, the existing parking lot drive aisle?
So here...
How's that jammer she sorted out?
Well, it has a width, so the turning radius, and you can see it sort of cuts in, so i- it's slightly out to sort of slow traffic somewhat, but there is the crosswalk that's put here. Signage, candidly, off the top of my head, I, I can't remember if it was shown on the pavement marking and signage, that, that there's a yield, but again, difficulty is, this isn't a formal road, so...
Okay, but is it improved as a road, or is only the, the sidewalk...
There are no roads, this is all drive aisles, driveways.
I understand, but I mean, is the road bed, is the drive aisle bed improved? Is it being repaved? Is it being restrepped? Is it being sort of incorporated as a, as a, a direct connection back to the, to the neighborhood? Or is it really just like you're dumping out into the Safeway parking lot when you come out from that side entrance to the neighborhood? It might be, it might help if you come up, the drawing before, there's a little bit larger scale. Yeah, if you zoom in on that...
So we can go.
It's really a simple question, you'll, you'll be able to answer it, I think, assuming it's the diagram.
Oh, it's like a super pixelated, i- if you can bear with me, let me, let me find a plan, because that'll be, we can zoom in, and I'll have better resolution. So this is sort of how, if you're talking from the community, how it operates. So obviously, the stormwater management facility, the sidewalk carries along, hitches in, crosswalk, crosswalk. The width is actually the same, so we're not changing. If your question was, the horizontal geometry, it's staying the same as the road, so going through...
So it aligns back there. Now, when you get to the part where it dumps out onto, yeah, right there.
So there were improvements, so you can see the change. So the existing curb that's there is now being pulled out, you know, it's doing the better radius to allow the turning movement. They are putting in, you know, they're realigning the pedestrian crosswalks and putting in a crosswalk, even though it's not shown on this plan. So it is facilitating a safer movement into these drive aisles, but it has a traffic calming aspect to it.
Okay, and, and in terms of re, so the, the islands, the parking lot islands that are just, just across from that new intersection, that's all existing to remain, except up closer to the light, it looks like they bridge one of the openings to, to have stacking. Who has priority in that, in that drive aisle? Is it still traffic exiting or leaving the Safeway?
I would believe so, because that's the direct, but the volumes are such, you know, it all depends upon time of day. I mean, obviously, in the AM peak, I, I doubt there's very many people leaving this, this, you know, you, it is assumed, and obviously, as we move to the, the traffic study, the volumes are going to be such that it's going to be people leaving the residential community. So I don't envision a lot of conflicts.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, plan view, cross-section view, staff is supportive of this and understands the nuances in the annexation agreement term. Um, on the northern side, the issue was, the question that was raised during the public hearing is why not put that in now? Well, well, there was two, three main points with this, and the photographs exhibit two. One is this lower right-hand corner, it's sort of the topographic issue, i- it's running down. The, the, the right upper corner, that photo sort of exhibits, this is how it operates. This is the loading and unloading zone for, um, the Safeway. Big picture, as shown in the traffic study, and as we've just sort of discussed, right now, there really isn't the volumes to warrant needing that. And if you opened it up now, what you're actually doing is, because of the existing operating shopping center, and with the way the drive aisles, the chair just brought up, you're actually going to increase potential vehicle pedestrian conflicts in front of that drive aisle, in front of the grocery store. So a- as was discussed by the applicant in, in their various transportation statements, the, the southern drive aisle, leading to the signalized intersection, coupled with Nursery Road, and with the right-in, right-out, can more than enough handle the volume of 106 units. So again, staff is supportive of, at this point, not putting it in. We always envisioned this connection being more in tune with the commercial redevelopment, not so much the residential development. So traffic and pedestrian circulation, the applicant submitted an 18-page document, so I wasn't about to try to restate an 18-page document. So what I did was, essentially in the staff analysis, highlight the bullet points, which are shown here, and, and the main takeaways are, everything's within walking distance. All the signals and pedestrian things all meet state and county standards. I mean, of note, both traffic impact statements were reviewed, affirmed, and approved by Maryland State Highway Administration and city staff. One of the comments raised, this last bullet, one of the comments raised during the public hearing was jaywalking. Well, again, as they sort of say, why would somebody, what's to be accomplished by jaywalking? I mean, somebody's always going to do it, you can't do anything to preclude stupidity. Uh, there's always going to be someone, but there's really nothing to be gained trying to dart across six lanes of traffic when there's not even a good pedestrian refuge on the other side. There, there's no, there's no time savings on this. All intersections will operate below the 1450. You know, the increased trips, don't make anything fail, there's no structural stuff. One of the questions raised was, well, what do you have to change on Maryland 28? Nothing, state highways reviewed it. The, the, the volumes aren't there, the generation rates aren't there to warrant additional turn lanes, or, or signalization, any of that. One of the questions is the stacking, as was raised for the signalized intersection in the Safeway, 150 feet. So, you know, five and seven vehicles stacking before you get to that turn that leads into the residential. So there's more than enough stacking. The next two slides, this is the projected pedestrian at full build-out, and I know it's very difficult to read, but it was in there, but what it's basically showing is in the AM peak for school, 19 students are going to cross. In the PM peak, 20 students are going to walk back. So we're not talking, I mean, using the current generation rates, this development at full build-out is only projected to, to generate 15 students, high school students.
Yeah, and I think the important point to make here is, it doesn't really matter how many, it matters how safe it is.
And that's why, what we looked at, and in the first, in this, in the supplemental traffic impact statement was a full review and analysis, and I presented it in the preliminary background report about the signalization, and how, and it was noted that all the signalization here has just recently been redone by MCDOT.
Right, right.
So what I was saying about, when the question about jaywalking, you, you can see, you know, what, what is, i- if you're coming out, what's really to be gained when you have a wider, safer sidewalk here, and when you're really the entrance?
When you're talking about kids.
Yeah, I, that's why I said, you can't predict. I get you, I was one of them when I used to walk in front of the city. Why go through a leg when I can just run?
And, and to your point, to that point, I was on this, on the study that built, that designed Northwest, and one of the things I said when we were designing that school that we needed that, that, um, big fence, and they didn't do it until somebody was killed.
Right.
That's too late.
But in the first year... But, but...
I, I know, we're not talking about, but I'm just saying...
And I think that is a valid point, but I want to acknowledge, it's not as if in this whole area on that side, there exist no high school students now.
Right, true, true.
So...
But I'm just saying, it's not...
I, I think we're talking about solving what may be an existing problem irrespective of this development.
Right.
And, and as I said, there, there's no observable quantify, perception's difficult. You know, it just wasn't there. The next one, um, shows the traffic actually generated, and I think, one of the things I noted here in the AM peak, because there was a lot of discussion that in the morning, farther down, people are pulling U-turns.
Yeah.
And...
And there's no U-turn signs.
Which is, which is fine, but, but again, a- and they're going, this is going to make it worse. What's being predicted, or at least through the modeling, is showing, excuse me, in the AM peak, 16 additional cars making that movement, you know, essentially going westbound. And a- again, looking at it, what, what, what I'm not clear on is, what is the purpose of the U-turns? Because if it's to get to the school, the primary entrances are off Quince Orchard Boulevard. So, you know, for, for this community...
I can tell you what it is, just, not that it has anything to do with this, this site plan, turning left onto Quince Orchard Road from 28 gets backed up in the light cycle, so you stay in the right lane and go through it, you turn to come back, and then you're right, you follow me?
Okay.
Then it's, you short, you, you get around all the stuff that's back, that's all it is. And it happens for a period, and it can be dangerous, that, but that's what's driving it.
Okay. That, that's why, just looking at it, you know, dispassionately going, I, I don't understand what, what, why...
You want kids.
It's a, it's a traffic pattern issue.
So again, I, I guess that, that's just behavior, and obviously, people find the path of least resistance, but to the comments that this is going to create nightmares, I mean, the state doesn't feel that way, looking at it, you know, 16 cars projected in the AM peak, you know, and we don't know where they're going, so... With the staff recommendation, obviously, staff is supportive of, of this application. We've made comprehensive findings in the staff analysis. I mean, it complies with the annexation agreement, it complies with the sketch plan, it complies with the master plan. It's just fulfilled, it fulfills many of the current strategic plan objectives. It's bringing in affordable housing in an area that has none, you know, protected affordable housing. So, so again, you know, a- as I state here, and stated in, in the staff analysis, staff recommends that the planning commission, upon the findings presented in here and a review of the record, recommend approval of the complete SDP application to the mayor and city council with the two conditions as submitted. And the first condition, just, just for knowledge, this was an annexation agreement term, it's just very difficult to do combined commercial and residential HOA documents when there's no approvals. So, you know, this is why we want to push it off to final site plan. And, in fact, in response to Commissioner Wessel during the public hearing, we want to make sure, as we mentioned, that the noise study done at SDP is a preliminary one, let's see what comes back with the architecture, see what the building materials are, to see if that changes, and let's make sure that any noise wall along 28, final design and justification is incorporated into that final site plan.
And just, just to be clear, where, where was the noise attenuation likely?
Front team 28.
Yeah.
So... I think I still have it up.
I guess I'm questioning why that would be different here than, than any of the residential that's happening in the next three miles along 28. What's, what's the issue? What's the issue?
Well, here, what the issue was going back, and it's in the preliminary background report, was a full discussion of the noise study. Basically, what happens is, the rear of these townhomes, based upon the noise of 28, exceeds the 45 decibel limit. So that's why this wall is shown here, and it's not final designed at SDP. You know, it attenuates that sound.
Okay. I think, fair enough, but I'm trying to picture, noise attenuation hasn't been implemented anywhere else out towards, at least on that leg of 28.
But at least the adjacent development, when I was looking at it on the satellite view when we were at the joint public hearing, it looks like those properties are five or 10 feet farther from 28. You know, not much. And if you look at the decibel curves that were presented, it just barely clips the back of those townhouses by five or 10 feet. So I think, I'm guessing.
That was enough to make the difference.
That's the difference.
Okay. So yeah, we do need to see that, but I was just curious where it came from, if there was a precedent already in place.
So obviously, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant, as we discussed, you know, with the previous one, the applicant's team's here to answer any questions, to help flesh out.
Anybody have questions?
I just got a quick question about, you said that they were going to put a yield at that?
I did not. I said, you know, they may, I don't, I mean, we have. So what's being shown, this is pavement marking and signage. So right now, there, there is not one, but let's go to the next page, which is the traffic calming. And I should probably zoom out. So there is some sort of signage, Commissioner Warren Board.
No parking.
Oh, no parking, so. There's not something, but again, I guess the volumes are such that it doesn't necessarily, remember, this is sort of the difficulty we have, everybody wants yield signs and stop signs, but there's warrants that have to be made.
Yeah.
And if the warrant's not here, especially when it's not actually a public road, it's unenforceable by us, so we tend not to put, you know, public signs like that on private roads.
Do we, just as a point of reference, you know that road, Trudy, I'm asking you, because you know everything. You know that road behind Chriswell, that comes out behind, between the gas station and Chriswell?
Yeah, the alley.
Is there a stop sign there? You know, right on to, is there a stop sign there?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's no.
But that comes out, that's coming to First Field, or.
Okay.
Road, and that's why it's intersecting with a road.
Or the public road.
Not, not a driveway.
Okay.
But I think we can certainly, I think the applicant's heard it, and they'll probably look into it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Okay, so let's move into our discussion. The, I guess to cut to the chase, we do have an annexation agreement that's fairly explicit about unit counts. They even included, I think, a basic sketch plan diagram that we saw in the public hearing that this largely follows. I do want to cover one detail, and that's that corner, the adjacent, as you talked about, the separation between the two new units and the existing house. Just look at that one more time and up a little more closely. And I appreciate your point that, in terms of what is acceptable, or what has been acceptable, or the precedent for how the different separations should be. Could you put, yeah, maybe zoom in a little bit, just on that, that one corner. And you mentioned, and we saw in our plan, that there's a landscape buffer there that is on HOA property, or is it just essentially part of the new lot? It'll be landscaped as part of the homeowner's new lot? Is that, what's the proposal there?
It's on lot.
It's on the lot, okay. So the two properties above, there's no, there's no strip of HOA property there, just, okay. Good. So it'll start out, okay, and is that the landscape plan there, or is that just a concept?
Bear with me one second again. So within the staff analysis, I actually included the landscape plan.
And while you're doing that, the, that connection.
So this is the actual landscape plan.
So you mentioned both deciduous and evergreen, fast-growing something along there. I don't, it doesn't look like much, it looks like three trees on the lot, which is, you know, for the first 20 years, isn't much really.
But with the evergreen, again, we haven't determined species, that's more of a final site plan issue, and obviously, we can amend this landscape plan, have final site plan to increase the thing. We just, essentially with this, we just wanted to lay out, there will be a buffer, it will be a mixture.
Fair enough.
Of types of trees.
If we can get into layering it, maybe put a little more density, okay. Any concerns about that separation? Because that was the one thing I haven't had my eye on during the public hearing, because there was a glitch in the way the GIS had overlaid, the site plan had overlaid the GIS image. Okay.
I think.
Go ahead.
Personally, I would move the lot a little bit south, just so the overlapping is not at the closest point, but I understand that there may be other constraints, especially with the.
You can sort of see right here, this is the beginning, you have the forest con there, and then you have a stormwater management facility.
Okay. Are any other issues on this? As I said, I think, I think it essentially aligns fairly well with the annexation agreement and the sketch plan that came in, it was not much of a deviation from that, so that's what we have to grade this paper on. Any other, any other issues, discussion?
I'll save mine for.
No, no, okay, very good. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, upon the findings presented in the staff report, recommend approval of the complete SDP 7716-2017 application to the mayor and city council with the two conditions presented in the staff report.
Second.
It's moved in second, and no one in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to our site plan agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, what do we have at first here? AFP-7591-2017, Market Square Shopping Center, the shopping center renovations, addition of pass through between Commerce Square Place and Market Street at 40 Market Street in the MXD mixed-use development zone, amendment to the final site plan. Give me a second.
I'll just have to note that, based on my participation on behalf of the Kentland Community Foundation on an exercise conducted this past April, I will be recusing myself from this application.
All right, very good. Let's get started.
Good evening, planning commission. Staff is before you to introduce application AFP 7591-2017. The applicant is requesting to amend the final site plan in order to renovate portions of the Market Square Shopping Center to include facade updates, landscaping changes, and the creation of a new pedestrian walk area. The subject property is owned MXD Mixed Use Development, and is located within the Kentland subdivision, north of the Main Street and south of Kentland's Boulevard. Staff would like to note that the condition number one, as written in the staff report, has already been satisfied and does not need to be included in your final approval. Further, staff would also like to note two small corrections within the staff report. First, that the new street name mentioned in the staff report was incorrect and should be Commerce Square Place, which is also consistent with the proposed site plans. Second, that in the section titled Overview, where the staff report details concern about icing and flooding within the new pedestrian walk area, it should read Final Plans Must Demonstrate a Minimum of 2 Inches or 0.17 Feet Vertical Instead of 17 Feet Vertical.
That's a good distinction.
That's a slight adjustment.
Darn decimal places.
Lastly, staff would like to note that the sign shown with the proposed architecture is for graphic purposes only. A future sign package will need to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission prior to issuance of any sign permits. So here to, what was that?
No, very good, thank you.
All right, here tonight to present the application, to answer any questions you may have, is Karen Garfield, Karen Garfield, excuse me, from Kimco Realty.
Great, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Karen Garfield, Director of Development with Kimco Realty. Kimco is a 60-year-old real estate investment trust with over 500 properties nationwide, and we have about 150 properties here in the mid-Atlantic region. Joining me this evening is Greg Reed, Vice President of Development and Construction, as well as members of our design team, including VICA Engineering, MVNA Architects, Horcopa Mockt Landscape Architect, and Lurch Early, who's our Land Use Council. Kentland's Market Square is approximately 20 acres, it sits immediately south of Kentland's Boulevard. The property is surrounded by a mix of uses, including the live-work units along Main Street, and is bisected north-south by Market Street and east-west by Center Point Way. We acquired Kentland's Market Square a little over a year ago, and in that time, we've done extensive outreach with our existing tenants, with prospective tenants, various community groups, local leaders, stakeholders, and spent time developing a strategic plan for the future of Kentland's Market Square, and this is really the first step in implementing that plan. In fact, we're very excited to be bringing Synopolis to Kentland's, which will be another great anchor to the center and an amenity for the community. Synopolis is a luxury movie-going concept with almost 20 theaters in the United States, and they've chosen to make Kentland's their first Maryland location. They'll join other strong existing tenants, including Whole Foods, in this very desirable location. We acquired this property due to these strong market fundamentals, great existing anchor tenant, and the Kentland's Boulevard Commercial District Master Plan. And that master plan is, as you know, creates a great framework that encourages the updates that we're proposing to the center. It calls for a quality public realm, accessible and connected places, a rich mix of uses, and a plan for incremental change. In addition, it makes immediate recommendations, including encouraging more restaurants and dining, facade transparency, and variations in the facade, so it doesn't look like a sterile There are many existing deficiencies in the center, in the design, including uninspired architecture and excessive use of ethos, which is why we want to update these facades. They're really low-quality outdoor seating opportunities, so we really want to create attractive seating areas. It's a pretty bland pedestrian experience, so.
Thank you.
So we want to improve that experience, and there's limited access to parking for our tenants who are along Market Street, so we want to enhance that access. The renovation site plan, proposed site changes include facade improvements and changes that we'll get into in a second, and the purple shows where those facade changes are all going to be occurring. And the creation of an activated pedestrian way through the existing Block C, as noted on this plan, to what is currently limited parking along Market Street. It does two things, it creates a better access to parking from Market Street for the tenants who are there, and it also creates more appropriately scaled retail spaces that will attract dining and more boutique spaces that are befitting of Kentland's and that the market is demanding. In addition, there are landscape enhancements, including the addition of treating stormwater in the form of biofilters, which will blend in with the proposed landscaping. This just starts to highlight the pedestrian cut-through, and how it relates to the rest of the pedestrian flow on the property, and creates new and improved outdoor seating opportunities, which are shown in the bright blue color. The outdoor seating really helps attract high-quality restaurants, and indoor/outdoor space is a big part of the current retail and dining paradigm, and this plan really maximizes those opportunities. This is the enlarged landscape, the enlarged plan that really shows some more detail about what this pedestrian cut-through passageway, Paseo, we also refer to it as. We use different pavers to promote the pedestrian flow through the Paseo, and also different pavers to really help define the outside dining areas. In the middle, this is very sensitive, isn't it? In the middle there.
We are too.
There are gathering and lounging spaces with large uplit seating cubes that are about five feet by five feet. They can be used for individuals or groups, just to create a nice place for people to gather. In addition, there's festoon or cantonary lighting that goes the length of the, of the Paseo, really enhances the experience, it defines the sense of place, keeps the area well-lit and energized. There are also planters and railings with planters to define the outside seating, outside dining areas. And then you'll note also, it extends along the east side here, where we're expanding the sidewalk to give more presence to the retail and allow for additional outside dining for the retail tenants that are, that are down here.
Can I ask you real quick, while you're back on that plan?
Sure.
Why is it offset like that? What's the, what's the sort of the Z, Z path you've got there?
A couple of reasons. It really helps us work around our existing tenants, it makes more sense with the existing tenant base to go that way. It works well with the dimensions of the building and creating spaces, particularly the depth that you would have on this side. So if you went all the way through here, you'd have probably too much depth for a workable retail space. And then finally, what it really does, you still get a very continual sightline through the whole, you still have a 12-foot distance that goes the whole length, but you also get visibility for these interior tenants from the, from the street, so it kind of does all three of those things. These are just examples and images of what the space will feel like with the furnishings, just showing some precedent images for barricades with planters included, some of the cantonary lights and pendants, the railings that'll go around the stormwater, and some of the planters, and then these uplit seating cubes that we think really will help create a nice gathering area. And then just an example of a bike rack. So each of the following elevations is really, follow the design principle of natural materials, eliminating ethos or overuse of ethos, transparent storefronts, connectivity to the outside space, and maintaining individual storefronts, so it feels like a place that's been built over time. And actually, a good example of this is already there with, with facilities, so this is really a continuation of what they've already started to do with really introducing natural materials. So, just kind of, to the extent that they're hard to see, we can, we can go back and answer any questions, but just highlighting each of these facades, really along, this is the side facing, looking toward the Paseo area. So this is Kentland's Boulevard over here. And the highlights here really are replacing this existing red metal roof and the dormers, and with a more, you'll see, we'll see colors on the next slide, with more, a more neutral palette, really increasing the storefront transparency, so eliminating a lot of this brick on the lower, lower elevation, and then, and then this cut-through of the building. This is just a rendering that starts to show what that'll feel like with some of the colors and materials. And here's, here's a slightly more artistic rendering showing that same view. So again, you can see a lot more transparency, this is looking down into the, into the Paseo area with the lighting, really activated space and outdoor, outside dining opportunities.
Is it not working?
No.
Let's see. Lot more green.
Okay.
Cool.
So this is looking on the opposite side from Market Street, so here you have the Paseo and the cut-through, and again, really just enhancing this corner, replacing the storefronts and bringing more transparency to the space. And then, this is, again, a rendering looking down toward that, just a view from the other side from Market Street, where you start to see the outside dining. In addition, we wrap this existing storefront around so that it still is very transparent and activated. This is the existing tenant who then gets nice outside dining along this pedestrian way. And again, another rendering, just showing a more artistic view of it, with some of the colors and materials, I think, more clearly shown.
So you mentioned using less eaves and, I guess, using more storefront, but in that particular elevation, it didn't look like the massing of the buildings changed much. So are they getting a whole new skin, or are you just doing a more modest?
In general, the premise is, if there's existing brick and existing facade that, that looks pretty okay, then, then we're keeping it, probably changing some signage and maybe paint and things like that. The actual massing of these buildings remains the same.
But market, but on this elevation in particular, how much of that is new material, and how much of it is really just sort of cleanup and renovation of the existing material?
On this facade, really, this side is a lot more cleanup.
Okay.
Right here, I guess to the north of the Paseo, and then this really becomes all pretty new.
Okay, all right.
So this is looking from Center Point Way down toward the former largeage space, so the, the big move here, I think, is really replacing this overhead door, or replacing this metal fence with, with an opaque door, so you don't see or smell the trash. And then also, replacing this facade here, and introducing more natural materials. And then this is the same building that we looked at before, where we replaced the, replaced the roof. Oh, sorry, and this is, again, a rendering, just looking down toward that, where you start to see the introduction of the, the door and the new, the new facade here.
So are you managing that corner space, the former restaurant space? It's been formally a lot of things. Cutting that up into smaller spaces, or do you wait and see what you can get for a tenant?
We believe right now that it's going to end up being two spaces, one on the ground level and one on the upper level.
Okay.
As you know, it's been a challenged space for a lot, it's. It's a challenging space, so there's a reason that it's hard, I think.
Curse space.
Not, we're here to end that.
She's going to fix our ugly baby.
Fix what?
Our ugly baby.
So these are just elevations looking on the interior of the Paseo. And this is really all new materials and new facades. This is all new construction. Again, it's the introduction of the wood and metal and stone materials, really the outside dining, a lot of transparency, a lot of probably, or a lot of roll-up doors and doors that open for outside dining. Again, another view into that, where you start to see, these are the cubes that we were talking about, some of the planters and the lighting. It'll just be a very activated and energized space. And this gives you, back to your question before, starts to show how by angling it a little bit, you do get some good tenant visibility. And then here's just a view from the other side.
Does this assume a certain mix of retail versus restaurant versus professional office or anything like that? Or is this, is that just going to be totally market-driven based on what you get for a tenant?
Well, it is largely market-driven, but I will say that there's, it's a lot of restaurant dining use.
Like 80, 20, 50, 60, 40, what do you think?
I would probably say 60, 40 if I had to guess.
Okay. And do you get some interest for professional offices either to continue as tenants or to come in as tenants? Or is that less and less an emphasis?
We're not really targeting office as a use. We're really targeting things that are more activate the space and really more retail-type, more traditional retail. I don't think, the spaces that we have now probably aren't great office spaces, at least on the lower levels. Yeah, I mean, we do have, you know, dental office, things like that.
We are short on nail salons.
We've heard. So this is looking on Market Street. Again, Movie Dick is right here, so Kentland's Boulevard down through the Starbucks corner. And again, replacing these ethos storefronts and again, making a very strong corner for the existing Starbucks corner, where it's a really prominent corner of the center, making it a nice gathering area. And this starts to give you a view of what that looks like. That's the facility space. And just a view of that corner from across the street. This would be looking from the existing Five Guys. So it's hard to see that this is a very activated space and just a freshened, a real fresh approach. And then this is Center Point Way from, looking from the Michael side, looking the other way. And really, this is a total facade update, trying to break up the spaces a bit and really just introducing updated materials. And this really highlights this corner, which is a current vacancy. And it's really modernizing and updating the canopies and then staining some of the brick, but relatively limited other changes on it. And then looking around the corner on Market Street West, again, it's really replacing the existing ethos with more, again, the more natural materials and updating some of the canopies and sign it. Well, we'll get to that. And painting and things like that. And here's just another more rendered view, starting to show the introduction of some of the wood and stone and natural materials that we're looking to bring in. And then the theater. So really trying, the big thing is, it's a theater, so it's always going to be a blank wall. So really trying to, again, this is, we'll talk about that later. But this is really trying to bring in materials and soften it and break up the massing of that wall. In addition, it increases the height at the corner. Theaters operate a little bit differently now. You don't go to the theater box outside. Most people actually buy their tickets online. And then you'll go in and there's a kiosk and there's still a booth, but more of the transaction happens on the interior. In addition, the theater will, the existing theater is about 30,000 square feet. The new theater will be 34,000 square feet because it incorporates this existing retail space and then the existing retail space that's on Market Street East. So. Again, just a rendering showing the corner change here. And it does still try to, or it does still maintain that transparency and keeping an activated space there where the ticket box will be. And this is the other side. Again, it's really trying to treat a large wall that has no real, you can't open up the theater. So some of the traditional movie signs will be on the side and some of the siding and really just trying to enhance that, what's a pretty blank wall.
So you also take me in that retail space as well?
Correct.
That's being incorporated?
Yes.
Okay.
On both sides, it gets incorporated.
Okay.
And just another view of the corner entrance feature. And then this is the existing Five Guys building. And again, it's really dressing up the facade. Probably no arguments there, that it could really stand, you know, some refreshing. Again, I think it'll really mimic and complement the facility space across the way. Stone and wood and things like that.
What happened to the facade? So if you would please, go back to the one that had the big Kentland Super Graphic on it. All right, back out, or right there. So all the way to the left, that corner, right, yeah. And as that returns back along that side, what's happening down there?
Currently, that stays as is.
Just as is, really?
Mm-hmm.
Why is that?
I think, you know, if we have a tenant with, that has some new needs or needs something different, we'll probably come back to you.
There is a tenant there that's obviously, the Chinese restaurant, I believe.
Yeah, and they're there.
They'll stay the same, that facade and everything?
But to be clear, that corner, what was formerly the-
Potomac Pizza.
-deli and pizza and all. They, it's essentially, it's vacant now. You're not doing anything with it until you get a tenant?
Currently, it's not. We don't plan to change that corner.
Seems like a strange thing to leave out of a major, a big project and you're not touching it.
But you can't have one railing step top.
Okay. It's your proposal.
Any plans to work with the city as far as the actual, the public space that's between facilities and titanium and the office building behind it?
Yeah, we've actually started those conversations from a programming level and talking about, in fact, I believe there's some kind of Christmas tree lighting-
Right, that's going on.
...tonight or tomorrow. Tomorrow, I think. And we, at a lot of our centers across the country, we do concert series and things like that. So we've been in contact with the city events department and talking about how to coordinate that, which night of the week makes the most sense because there are a lot of other ones in the city as well.
But I guess the bigger question, if I can paraphrase, is are you assuming programming for that space or is it going to be more of a cooperative thing with the city? Because at one point, it's been through a couple of different scenarios. At one point, a certain tenant took, kind of took ownership of that. At another time, I think the former landlord took a little bit of ownership in that. And I think the city has done, I'm just curious how you-
The city now- Well, the city does own-
I'm not having ownership of programming for whatever kind of events are in there.
We would do the programming.
If you go back to the plan, it shows Market Street, where the Paseo would be on the right. And, you know, it's that section of your plan, just as a reference, if you would.
That one?
It's not up yet. That'll work. And if you wouldn't mind, if you could zoom in where the Paseo dumps out onto Market Street. And I think, and this probably isn't the right panel, there was one that shows the bulbout on the parking or something. There was a-
The crosswalk?
Yeah, go to the next exhibit, next slide.
Next slide.
Next one.
That works. So if you zoom in there, so that doesn't quite align with the Paseo. It's sort of this offset thing. And I remember too, there's sort of this painted, relatively long loading zone or no parking zone along there now. It's sort of an awkward thing for a street we're trying to promote on-street parking for and all. How is all that resolved there? What's going on there with the crosswalk and the-
For the record, James Buckheister with VICO. To, see the screen here.
I guess the first question, why is that not all just sort of lined up nice and neat with the Paseo pops out?
So on the north end of where the bulbout is, there's an existing storm drain inlet that I don't know shows up on the plan. Right there in the corner where the bulb come down, right there. There's an existing storm drain inlet.
Okay.
And so we're respecting that existing infrastructure and starting it there. And given the clearance distances we need from parking to crosswalks, it extends to the south rather than being centered on the Paseo.
I got you. So there's something in the way. And then would that long, kind of awkward, painted, no parking zone go away then? It's there now?
I think that's going to be a question for Kimco. It's the, the striping is on the west side, like that second tree at the top, left of the page. So right now, it's-
It's actually a city street.
Yeah, it's a public road, Market Street.
So the, actually, can you go to the aerial? Or the one in our presentation?
Is that around the first page?
Yeah. So actually, the property, it's a public, Market Street is a public road through here.
But you're doing some improvement.
So the loading is, all the on-street parking is controlled by the city.
So do we have to maintain that loading? I mean, I'm trying to figure out how you reconcile that with the new crosswalk and-
Is that shown on the new site plan?
Yeah, if you pull up Exhibit 3, Ray, and zoom in, you can see, I think, what John is referencing.
Go to the next page, the full page.
You can see it right there.
Yeah, but it's not seen.
So, yeah, you can see it there. There it is.
It's right here.
Certainly a condition that we could put on it to remove that.
And it wouldn't have to be, or does it have to be there? I mean, is that?
I think we want to defer to Ollie Moonparde.
Yeah. I don't, I think it was put there because the original applicant, the original owner of the shopping center asked for it.
Okay. Because I would think at this point, you'd want to clean all that up in other bill for parking and-
Not to mention, there's a fire hydrant right there, which is a bit of a conflict too.
So is that guarding the fire? Is that actually no parking for the fire hydrant or is it?
I thought it was loading.
All right. Sort that out later. Okay, you can sort that out later. It's sort of rendering more of it less parked, or more of it no parking. And when you do the bulbouts, that seems counterintuitive to what Market Street would feel like with parallel parking all along there for access to the businesses and all. Somehow, that needs to be worked out. Okay. Nice presentation, thank you. Any other?
Commerce Square Place, I guess it is, that goes into the Paseo. You've got an outcrop, we have plantings, it looks like. And it's an aisle driveway kind of a situation. How necessary or how many spots are there really that we could sacrifice perhaps and make that more into a boulevard, into a pedestrian way, rather than just for parking? Because it's one-way in from what it looks like. We're opposite the theater, where the theater is. If you can look at the, yeah, that's it. And over to the, yeah, Commerce Parkway, right. That's the only ingress, is down at the bottom. And you've got maybe a dozen spots there. Is it really, are those spots necessary? Or can you actually create more of a pedestrian-friendly kind of wide sidewalk and exhibits?
Well, those are existing, I mean, those islands are existing now, the parking.
Right, and then just kind of, you know, brick and eight or something.
There's actually a second entrance to that.
Up at the top?
At the top, yes.
Yeah.
If you are familiar with where they have the loading area.
Yeah, that's right.
So you get in, there's an entrance here.
Yeah, but the very, there it is, yeah. Okay.
Are you saying-
Why have that even for parking over there when you've got that huge parcel A for parking? And just, because otherwise, you're cutting off people. People are going to get in the cars and that causes traffic. And people go into the movie theater, they go in and out. It's kind of chaotic over there. And you're going to create that beautiful pedestrian Paseo.
It is still nice, though, to have some nearby teaser parking, I guess you would call it.
Teaser is, it is really, because it's really, you know, aesthetically, I just think it would make a lot more sense to just create a more of a pedestrian-friendly area and create the retail-
Well, they have guarded, they've got in the island a place where you can walk through and sort of made it very distinct.
Right, over there at the entrance to the Paseo, but that's it. I mean, and that takes, you've already eliminated maybe three spots or maybe four spots with that.
Isn't there a sidewalk on the other, on the island?
I don't-
Not that side.
The other side, the right side.
There's a sidewalk there.
I'm just saying, if you're going to have retail space over there if there are restaurants, move them out. You have terraces, you have patios.
And that's what we did by expanding the sidewalk as we did. It took out actually one of the bays of parking.
Oh, on this side, on the building side?
Correct.
Yeah.
We can get that more in discussion.
Okay, yeah, I just, just a suggestion. I like it.
Okay. With that then, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? And if so, please come on up to the podium here and state your name and address. Anybody? Oh, here we go. Good evening.
Good evening. Kendrickian, 140 Chevy Chase Street. So I come tonight, I am supportive of the Paseo concept. I really am. I think that where we live, this is more overdue. The problem that we've had over the last year is that rather than having a lot of new tenants coming in, we've had tenants leaving. And I guess I would urge you, you know, we had a, you had a town meeting several months ago. And at that time, you said this month in December, you know, you were going to give us some more information regarding new tenants that were going to be signing up, et cetera, like that. And I guess I would urge you to have another town meeting. And at that time, I mean, the presentation you gave tonight was terrific. And I guess I would urge you to give that presentation again to the community and also give us more information. Like hearing about larges, then now you're thinking about two tenants, one up, one down. I think the community really is desperate for this to be revitalized. And I think you're the ones who can do it. And I think you have to give us the information and get the community knowing that, in fact, something is happening, rather than rumors and innuendos that nothing's going on. So just a word for wise. But again, I am truly supportive of this concept.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good evening.
Hi, John Ingrascia. I'm at 705 Kent Oaks in Kentland. I want to introduce Kentland Downtown Working Group to the commission and to the applicant, Kim Cohen. Welcome. The Kentland Downtown Working Group is an arm of the Kentland Citizens Assembly that was chartered to monitor development and initiatives that are taking place in the greater Kentland's area. Several of our members are here tonight. And we're here to hopefully get the word out to the community, to the residents, about what's happening within the community. And so we're very pleased to see the proposal tonight and to hear about some of the developments. And we look forward to seeing it move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or testimony application? Okay, well, not seeing any hands go up or people jump out of their chairs. Ray, if you want to move into the recommendation piece, then we'll move on to the discussion, please.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations, grant AFP 7591, 2017, Amendment to Final Site Plan for Market Square, finding it in compliance with Section 24-170 and 24-172A of the City Code with two conditions as discussed previously.
Okay. All right, so a question before we get too deep in the discussion. The Kentland Super Graphic proposal- Okay. All right. So a question before we get too deep in the discussion, the Kentland super graphic proposal, um, where does that fall in our world of, is it signage? Is it facade? Is it artwork? What, what is that that?
That would be in part of the, the signage package.
It would be, okay.
None of the, the verbiage basically on any of the buildings would be approved tonight.
Okay. But the concept of a graphic on that wall would be part of the signage. Here, here's where I'm headed with it. I think it's an interesting idea to do, um, you know, something with that wall other than just a big bank wall or just, you know, kind of conventional pilaster or something. It's really a cool idea to do something very different, very kind of aggressive with it. On the other hand, I don't know if we should be discussing what it actually says tonight to follow the, you know, or because.
That's correct. As, as, as was noted, none of the signs on here are part of your review and they will come back.
And call, call that a concept placeholder for the concept of a big graphic, but we'll get into that later.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I would note, um, that sign, if, you know, when it did come back, it would require a, an adjustment to the sign ordinance as well. So again, it would have to definitely come back. The commission is part of the sign package.
Okay.
We have started the review of the signage with them. Um, and we decided, with staff decided not to bring it to you tonight because again, there's, there's still some things that need to be flushed out, I think, before the commission could really take action on that sign. So.
Okay. And that answers the question essentially is that, well, the discussion about whether it says and how it says it, although I would say candidly, I really like the idea of doing something new and fresh with that wall. So that's, that's great. But that would come up as signage. So that answers that question. The other thing I wanted to revisit very quickly is the, um, oh, I'm going to get this, let's see. It, it would be facing east from Market Street according to the plan. It's essentially the side of the theater. It's the elevation of the theater. Then that has now the former dry cleaner.
Florist.
The former florist space.
And the TVs that used to be.
The 1992 TVs.
Where they're proposing their movie signs.
The TV museum. What's that?
Is that where they're proposing their movie signs?
I think that's what that is. That's what I wanted to ask a little more clearly is what, you know, that's essentially the view from the big public plaza, right? It's the break between the titanium restaurant building and the office building. And, and in this elevation, I, this isn't a particularly flattering elevation because it's just, just a line drawing, but you know, is there something about that that does make a nice backdrop to the, to the public square? Is it lit? Is it, you know, are the materials interesting? What, what's going on with this? Because it.
Sure. Let me, uh, this starts to give it, this gives a little bit of a better peek at it, I guess. But yeah, again, the, the, um, those boxes on the line drawing, um, are, are showing the movies, kind of traditional movie signs. Again, I think the materials really.
Backlit? They'd be something?
They would be lit.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Um, again, I think the materials start to really break the space up. There'll be lighting on the building.
So what is, what are the materials there?
Want to go through the materials?
Yeah.
Uh, Wayne Broadfield, uh, with MBNA Architects. Um, I think the concept design that we gave the eventual tenant was to kind of give them a representation of what we're expecting as far as interaction with the street. So the, the retail boxes and the sign boxes you see there are kind of, um, basically an ode to the old side theaters. Like Karen was saying before, we're not having a ticket box. So the actual massing of the theater is going to be encroaching more towards the street. But, um, the, the, you know, what the, the upcoming theater, the upcoming movies and stuff, that's, that's still an ode and something that's, that's relevant. As far as the materials go, we are sticking with our natural material palette, a stone, uh, masonry base, um, wood siding. Um, we do have some extended canopies. So we have some down lighting, kind of the street level there.
On that facade?
On that facade, yes.
So you do, okay.
Um, if you go to the, if you go to the next sheet, it's perspective. So obviously that's, that's looking at the main vestibule. Um, but off to the right there, the, the brown, uh, I guess horizontal lines there, that, that is intended to be wood siding with a stone or brick base. Um, and we're kind of breaking up the massing along, uh, I think it's, uh, Market Street or no, um, Main, Main Street West or East. That the piers would kind of break up the architecture along the way there because eventually that tenant would be taking up the entire massing of the block to the townhomes.
Right.
So breaking that up with these vertical piers.
Is there, and this doesn't show it either. Is there any, I don't know what's going on with, with your deep line. Are you doing anything with landscaping along there? Or is it really just the existing tree, tree wells will continue?
At this time, I think it's just all the existing. Yes.
Okay. Okay. So there isn't, there isn't an opportunity to break that at a, at a sidewalk level with landscape beds or?
At this time.
It's a very narrow sidewalk there.
Is it narrower there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And same with the, the leg that runs down the other side.
Center point way is even narrower. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about how stark it is and whether or not this, this is doing enough to kind of take, take you where you want it to. I know the materials are nice and it looks like in that, that small scale rendering, there's something going on with it, but you know, the issue would be how, how friendly is it on the sidewalk? You know, is high level type, type stuff is it, is it?
I think the, the architecture, if you go to the, the perspective, that's the, uh, better rendering maybe. Yeah. Up like two, two sheets probably. Yeah, that. So the super graphic that you're mentioning, that, that was kind of an ode to actually kind of give some more importance to that facade. Cause as you come down.
You don't see it coming out yet.
You know, coming straight from Kentland's Boulevard. Um, the intention was, um, right now the existing brick line, um, is emphasized below and it kind of hits the door line. That's, that's all it's there is the brick. Everything above is stucco.
Right.
So the tenant would, you know, the, the eventual construction drawings would actually be replacing that, putting in brick and then painting the whole facade with that, um, with the horizontal band, kind of breaking it up between the brick and, and siding. So the, the intent of the, the super graphic to kind of elaborate was to kind of envision that whole facade, you should say Kentlands, you're now putting the siding on top and giving homage with the more of a solid, solid font.
It's also really to create something iconic for, for Kentland.
And I think that works pretty well as a gesture. I think.
Gives us like a Instagram.
More bothered by the other side facing back toward the park. And it's, it's a little bit more, it's not a streetscape onto itself, but just sort of the side of the building. And, and one of the things we struggle with in these, this context of something like this is, is all of the places you walk, they feel like it's a place you should walk. And it doesn't just feel like it's the back of a building or, you know, kind of off the side somewhere. I'm just sort of thinking out loud that if, if, if you're convinced the scale of that's appropriate at a pedestrian level, I'll go with you on that. But that's, that's looking at it at this scale, it's more of a, see it from Kentland's Boulevard on the super graphic. And from the other side, it doesn't really look like much from any direction. It's a nice facade tree, been no question, but it doesn't really add to the streetscape much. Maybe the movie posters pull that off, especially if they're done in a little higher level quality than just pinning up paper inside of a shadow box. And I don't know what ultimately the production of that is. Is it, is it a backlit translut, transparency? Is it, you know? I'm going to get an answer here, I think.
Good evening. My name is Greg Reed. I'm the vice president of development for Kimco. Those graphics are actually the TV monitor graphics. Have you seen for the newest movie theater? So they're actually screens, LED screens. Is the standard that Synopla has for their facilities. So it's not a box with paper taped in there.
Yeah. So that's, that's a good answer.
So it's a much prettier, and there should be, if you saw on the Kentland side, there's the down lighting. It'd be the same thing to, to light the sidewalk. So it's not a dark sidewalk with just those boxes. There is down lighting proposed. That'll help with pedestrian access.
Okay, good. Excellent. Good answer. Are we okay with, uh, with LED screens on the building without any kind of funny signage references or anything like that?
Well, you, you'll have to review those because you have to approve all LED signs.
Okay. But we can approve those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can include that within their sign package, comprehensive sign package when that comes back.
So not tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Looks good.
Great.
All right. Any other discussion?
No.
Um, again, I'll, I'll reiterate, I'm a little disappointed that there's that one leg of the center left out. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, but I have a suspicion there's a backstory that, that doesn't belong in the discussion tonight. But, um, it just seems odd that there's one small leg at the center that's not going to at least get a big coat of paint.
Shoot myself in the foot. I thought you would pick on the former dress barn space that we're also.
I'm going there next.
So I, I think what will, you'll see happen is both those spaces are being actively marketed. We think they're slightly larger spaces. So we're going to get sort of more of a national tenant that's going to have, want to have their own flavor that we're going to have to incorporate into the design. So instead of really speculating with what we're going to do, I think we'll have to come in with those once we have those tenants signed up.
And that's fair. And I think, um, maybe, maybe the, the, from our perspective, seeing a whole new, and I guess I should ask the question, is this happening all at once or is there a phasing plan?
There will be a phasing plan. Um, talk about timing. Our goal, there are certain opening times for theaters. One of the times is now. This is a big theater time because of releases. So our goal with Synopla is to have them open by, um, next November, right before Thanksgiving. So they can make the holiday theater time. I don't believe we'll be able to have the rest of the facade renovations done at that time. I think what you'll see is tenant opening, starting in the spring of 19, going into probably summer of 19, as we get leases done. We'll try to have to honor, we have to honor all our existing tenants. So some of that facade work on the existing tenants will take a little longer, but we'll immediately cut through the Paseo once we start construction this spring, optimistically, if everything goes well. And have that done by next winter with tenants moving in there.
So coinciding with the opening of the theater, you'd have the Paseo done.
Yes, that will be our goal. I don't know if we'll have tenants opening to correspond because of tenant fit out work takes a little bit longer on the new spaces. It'll take us months to cut through the Paseo, do the stormwater, the Paseo, the pavers, all that. So, but we would hope to have the tenants in there and working when Synopla opens.
Okay. So dress bar might go national. You need to worry about that facade later. Michael's is existing. They're, they're probably happy with it. They've got, or what about the other end?
Pet Smart and. Pet Smart, Five Below and Whole Foods all are very content with their facades. And we think they're not as, an abomination of defense of some of the other existing facades.
Not going to knock, not driving businesses. But okay. So the other end, the, the, the space between the Chinese restaurant and the, um, uh, will essentially be the back of the theater.
The Potomac Pizza area.
That former, the former Potomac Pizza area. What, what is?
We're actively marketing. I think that will also be a national to correspond with.
They will then need a facade.
And then we'll have to do the facade at that time. Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that answers that question. Thank you very much. Any concerns?
No concerns.
It's going to be a great.
You know, I meant to ask, you didn't, should, there was a tower in the rendering, uh, kind of a new tower. You didn't really spend any time explaining what was happening with that.
So, you know, um, we thought it was important to have some kind of, um, something, um, trying to think of.
A beacon?
Sure. Um, something that really helped define the space, let people know there's something back there. Um, so again, we're not here, we won't address signage, but one of the ideas was to, I'm trying to, yeah, to potentially use it, um, as some signage for, um, for, for either tenants or, or the, um, or the area. But it really helps define that space and market, I guess.
No question. I guess the question is, is it in fact a motherboard for a lot of businesses or is it going to be more of a, of an architectural element that just announces the center?
Um, more, more of an architectural element, but I think that it lends itself to potentially, um, having some, some signage as well.
Okay. So you might highlight an anchor, an anchor tenant or something with that.
I think you would probably highlight tenants that are in that area.
Yeah.
I would add, um, it is, I said, we have started reviewing the signage, um, that they're proposing. Um, and this has come up, um, already in kind of discussion. Um, we don't allow per these sign ordinance, signage above the roof line. So, uh, under that, I don't know if it's something that could be allowed.
Okay. Okay. That's something to consider. But the tower is in, right? It's, it's that, that element to kind of anchor them.
Sort of breaks up that straight line roof level and has an element to draw you in there.
It's, it's architectural interest.
Good. No, that's fine. Yeah, this is a good discussion. I'm just trying to clarify what.
As, as you mentioned, the jog and the, the actual passageway, it kind of lends itself to having some kind of landmark or item that kind of, you know, you can orient yourself when you're on Market Street and Commerce Square Place.
Excellent. I think this is an, an amazing and long overdue project. Thanks very much for, for, uh, bringing this to the city and stepping in to take on this, this center. It's going to be a, a nice, a nice addition to the neighborhood.
And I think the recommendation made by the public as well to contact Kentlands and Lakeland's homeowners associations would be an excellent idea. Just thinking about the speed, because there are a lot of rumors running around.
Yeah, I don't know if you, if, um, do you, do you have an actual Market Square website now that's actually this, this business or is it just the Kimco?
It's just the Kimco site currently.
Okay.
Um, we do have an office at Kentlands Market Square, um, 117 Market Street. Um, we have met with, uh, with all the community associations and we actually have, um, ongoing meetings scheduled, um, over the next month or so.
Good. I was really, the question was more about where, where on an ongoing basis and, and so that they don't look at, or need to look at all of the plans posted to the city, although everybody's welcome to look at that. Sure. Just a more kind of highlight of what's coming soon, kind of from your, your voice. And I, I didn't know whether there was an opportunity for that already, if you've already established a website or something, but, um, it's a question more than anything about saying you should.
Once the site gets approved, it will go onto the, it will have its own website. We're hesitant to do that just in case something happens and we don't get approval, we can't move forward, then we've said all this and.
Okay.
Makes it go very bad on the website.
Then people can see what's, what's coming.
There'll be a tab under the redevelopment development section of what's coming up. And once it's all completed, it'll have its own section because of the size of the center.
So we can tell people to stay tuned and start looking there as this moves forward. Okay. Very good. Any other, nice work.
Yeah.
We should, we should move this forward. We should finish it sooner. All right. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted and applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings, recommendations, move that the planning commission grant AFP 7591, 2017 amendment to final site plan, Market Square update, finding it in compliance with sections 24 dash 170, 24 dash 172A of the city code with the two conditions as written to the record.
Okay. And I'll interrupt before the second, that, just to check in with the staff, the discussions about how Market Street is configured will be addressed at kind of a staff level.
Correct.
Without condition, right? We don't need, okay.
Need a second.
Second. It's moved to the second and I'll bear, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking, seeing, uh, seeing all this coming. All right. That takes us to our second site plan for the evening. That's AFP dash 7590, 27T, Mini of Montgomery. That's a service addition. Showroom demolition at 621 North Frederick Avenue, the C2 general commercial zone. And this is amendment to final site plan. And presenting, Chris Burris presenting the present. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, commissioners. Staff is before you tonight to present AFP 7590, 2017. Committee of Montgomery County showroom building demolition and service and sales building addition. The applicant also proposes to subdivide the parcel into two. So should the planning commission approve the amendment to final site plan application before you right now, the subdivision of properties will be reviewed later tonight in a separate application. The subject property is located at 621 North Frederick Avenue and is located in the Gateway subdivision. The property is owned C2 general commercial. It includes 8.4 acres and contains five buildings, including the two currently occupied by Mini Cooper. The applicant requests approval for the demolition of a 2,000 square foot Mini of Montgomery showroom building and the construction of a one-story, 3,780 square foot addition to the existing 16,500 square foot sales and service building. This application comes before the planning commission, accordance with sections 24 dash 168 and 24 dash 172A of the city code, which require a commission approval for amendment to site development plan applications. I will now turn it over to Everett Helmut of Mini of Montgomery and Mike Lyles of Joyce Engineering as we go through the plans.
Good evening. Thanks for, thanks for sticking it out tonight. It was a busy agenda.
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, the planning commission. I'm Everett Helmut, the owner of Mini Montgomery County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Uh, we came into the city in June of 2013. So we've been here four years and we came into a, an empty building on that parcel. We renovated it to Mini, uh, BMW standards. And, uh, we employ 50 associates that are, uh, very happy to be there. We think we're doing a great job in the community and have enjoyed, uh, this location.
So before us right now on the screen should be the demolition plan. If we could explain what's going on here.
Uh, Mike Lyles of Joyce Engineering. Uh, the existing 2,000 square foot building is, uh, cited in the, in the middle of the angle point, I should say, the property corner, sort of oddly cited for the property in general. But we intended to take that down and leave the slab at grade. That, that, just beyond that facility, that facility there into the adjacent property is the low point. So from the existing main dealer, dealership, right there, correct, down past the building to be demolished and keep going down at the angle towards the other existing building. Yeah, that parking lot down the bottom, it's a gradual 2%, 3% fall. Um, it's predominantly impervious area. Uh, there are some green areas that you see there, uh, that is considered land disturbance. The, the pervious area is what the intent was based. The, the pervious areas, what the intent was based on our application is to mill those areas, and with the new building expansion to go, I'm sort of jumping ahead here to the, to the, I'm trying to give you a premise of how everything was thought out, was that the grade rate adjacent to the main dealership is pretty much that grade. So we can mill that area and then trench cut for the new building expansion for, to stay under a limited disturbance number, the 5,000 square foot. The addition primarily is used to just regular service of vehicles, I think Everett. It's not major maintenance or major repairs, it's detailing and oil changes and stuff like that. So there's, at this time, no plans to put lifts in or anything like that. So with the new building added on there, the trench cut, the building goes up, and it's already been milled, that a concrete slab, once it's under roof, could be applied inside the structure. So there's no earth disturbing activity there. The rest of the existing area would be milled, the existing curb and gutter would be pulled out, the slab where the existing demo building is would be milled down, and then there'd be a surface course put over top of the impervious area, including the islands that have been taken out. And the drainage has not increased to the, any of the facilities, to the inlets there, there's really just one, but there's no increase in drainage, intensity of the runoff or anything. But this was in an effort to maintain and maybe get an additional few parking spaces that are needed for the facility itself, for the repairs, where to put the cars while they're waiting to be serviced. And that, that was the intent and how, what the thought process is.
Your access for a customer, right, it doesn't really change, you're still coming in from the?
From Russell.
Russell Avenue side, tucking in from about there, yeah.
In fact, with the building, the demo of the existing building, you know, in our opinion, the traffic flow is much better in essence on the site.
And you get better exposure on the Frederick Avenue side?
Correct.
Okay.
So now we have the site plan up that shows the existing showroom building is removed, the parking lot has been reconfigured, and the addition has been constructed on the existing sales and service building. Anything else to add?
We appreciate all the work Everett, the staff put in the review and.
Just so we have it on the, on the kind of the discussion, do you have the elevations to?
Yeah, we're getting to that now, here's the, showing the striping detail on the site plan. And here, let me show the floor plan for the entire building, and the area in white would be the addition. And here.
Looks like six lifts.
Yeah, that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, the, the four, there's four stalls right there that the architect showed, and he's showing the concrete slope into the center. He does show, it looks like he may, he shows, it says future service bay.
I mean, not that it matters where or another, it's just.
Two of them were proposed, and four are future.
And then moving on to the elevations, again, the white section would be the addition. So here's the west elevation, the east elevation or the rear, and the south elevation where vehicles would enter. And currently they also enter from the, the elevation.
So the east elevation, I think it's, no, it's west elevation, facing Frederick Avenue and Frederick Road.
Correct.
There's really no change then to the existing, there's, there's really no significant change to the rest of the building, which is you're pulling that one, pulling down that one old, I guess, obsolete showroom, or it was kind of a display building, right?
They already upgraded the, the new, the existing building.
Right, that's, I was trying to remember the, the chronology of this, but you did, you were in for the, for the new kind of trade dress when it was converted to Mini.
2013 was when we did the upgrade. And then the other facility that's being taken down actually was, I think, an Zuzu showroom, when they sold the Zuzu cards that are back in the eighties.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's, it's really kind of longer overdue for, for leaving.
All right, any questions? Was that it Chris, is it?
No, it isn't.
Chris, will it get a sign package separately?
There will be no additional signage, it's part of this project.
Okay.
And what about the subdivision?
That will be addressed at a, the next application.
The record plat, this is showing the subdivision, the record plat will finalize it.
So what was the need for the subdivision, why, what's the backstory of that?
So the, there's a real estate investment trust, I got a gentleman, David Horford from Rosenthal Acura, I think you all met with him several months ago. So there's a large parcel that automotive, Capital Automotive REIT owns. And on that parcel is Rosenthal Mazda, Rosenthal Acura, Mini Montgomery County, and then another older Nissan store. So David and I, the Rosenthal group and my group, Passport group, we're buying it from the Capital Automotive investment.
Oh, I see, okay.
So they, we've been working on it for, David's been working on it for like six years, I've been working with him for, say, three, and they finally agreed to sell it to us.
Okay.
So we don't have to be renting.
So it's coincidental to this project, it's not really a reason for the project, I guess in a way. Okay, good. Any other questions?
There's a, I guess there's an ingress egress easement that has to be reviewed as well, and that's on one of the conditions, and that's with respect to the driveway coming in off that private road?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, just want to clarify that.
Good, all right. In case anybody's listening to the recorded version of this meeting, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this application, but if you turn the cameras around, it'd be pretty, pretty easy to see that that's not gonna happen. So, I guess, what, what is the recommendation first please?
Staff recommends the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant AFP 7590-2017 amendment to final site plan, finding it in compliance with sections 24-168 and 24-172A of the city code, with the eight conditions.
Very good. All right, is there a motion please? Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, staff reports, findings and recommendations, grant AFP 7590-2017 amendment to final site plan, finding it in compliance with section 24-168 and 24-172A of the city code, with the eight conditions as presented in the record by staff.
Second?
It's moved to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously, thanks very much for your patience tonight, it's been a long, long night, I realize that, and good luck, great to see that you're continuing to expand and move the business along, it's great to see, thank you. All right, that takes us to record plats, and we have, we have an agenda of record plats, there's three of them tonight, Ray, do you want to set it up for us please?
Yes, I am back. We have three plats for your approval tonight, two of which are for the Crown Neighborhood 3, Phase 1, and one of which is for the Mini dealership as previously discussed. Staff has reviewed and approved the, excuse me, staff has reviewed all of the plats, and they are ready for your approval.
Mr. Chair, I, I move that we approve the record plat that's presented to us this evening. Second?
It's moved to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously, thanks Ray, we'll sign those after, after the lights go off.
Automatic alarm.
I'm checking to do it in the dark.
In the dark.
That takes us to, from the commission, Phil, may I start with you?
Yeah, I don't have any new events or any announcements, I just, the more I'm thinking about our earlier discussion, I think in regards to the Kentlands and Phil properties, on a global level, I think we should have some further discussions either with staff or amongst ourselves about really how we look at master plans for areas that have longstanding, you know, sketch plans. And really what, what the intent and purposes of these master plans, and of going through the effort for doing them on areas where there's something already approved that will live on for, in perpetuity, that sort of negates the master plan. So I, it just, I think that's a point that's worth further discussion and further sort of education.
Yeah.
Because it was, I think it caught me a little bit by surprise, I think it was a little bit sort of unexpected.
Well, I had to turn this a little bit on that, that I think that, we should have cut to the chase on that, that that would have been the, the more firm, we, we have some standard language about complying with the master plan, or, you know, that sort of language in most of our approvals. Reality is, if there's something like a, an already approved sketch plan zoning, or an annexation agreement or something like that, that really ought to be just a big bold letters upfront, that that's what, that's what the governing piece is, and, you know. I think, we just see the reminder, I think sometimes when we're up under fire here, that, that it's there. I know it's in the packet and part of the narrative, but it becomes, that's why I felt like I had to stop, and we just get very clear about what's, what's driving this, because it's.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it was clear here, because I, I mean, I spent a couple hours trying to answer that question for myself over the last couple days, is okay, what are we reviewing against? And the easiest thing to find was, hey, we're reviewing against this, the most recent thing was this master plan.
Well, and that's the language we see most often, yeah, that's, that's, I think that's the point. But it's a good point, and I, you know, I wonder if, you know, we have, the master, various sections of the master plan are coming back for review and updates over the course of the next couple of years. I wonder if we don't revisit something about when a sketch plan exists, or when an annexation agreement exists in the land use piece or any of the master plan elements that overlap that, that that language is explicit in the master plan, that, you know, this is what's here, we realize that, but looking forward to other opportunities, the master plan should, it should go towards this, this objective. And that might be one place to, to think about looking at it too.
One, and even if there's a, and I know this is dangerous territory, so I'm assuming it obviously needs lots of study, but is there a valid reason or benefit to having expiration dates on things like a sketch plan? I mean, you've entitled somebody to build to a plan. So, I know we don't have a lot of open green space left in the city, but if I owned a farm and got a sketch plan and sat on it for 40 years, it's ludicrous to think that that sketch plan is still valid, that the people reviewing that and approving that would have given that same approval when so much time has passed. Like, is there a reasonable, you know, fair way to, to look at that? Or, or does it, you know, cause too much uncertainty for property owners? I mean, I think that's a valid concern, when you've got something that was approved in sketch plan 20, almost 30 years ago. A lot's happened since then.
Well, we'll definitely look into it, I mean, there's a lot of things floating in my head that conflict, but I think let staff look at this and then get back to you on it.
We're not gonna solve it here.
I mean, maybe, you know, if nothing else, in, in the course of doing the master plan update, especially whenever land use comes back, which is gonna be a while, but even the, even the other, other elements of the master plan, you know, just an inventory of those sorts of things, what sketch plans are sitting out there?
Well, I mean, it's not only sketch plans, it's approved site plans.
Approved site plans, annexation agreements, I mean, there's lots of pre-existing approvals.
I mean, you have approved site plans that are out there and a total different land use, and you still have to go with the approved site plan.
Right, I understand that.
It's, you know, it's a, it's a big thing to wrap our heads around.
But I think at the very least, maybe as a kind of a working, a working framework in the staff analysis as we see these come up again, maybe that just needs to be amplified, you know, at a much stronger level, but, you know, this is what we have a prayer, the master plan's out here driving it, but to be honest, the actual thing that's gonna be the criteria for approval is sketch plan, whatever. Good point, anything else?
Nope.
Go ahead.
Any scheduling on the improvements to the crosswalks over Kentlands Boulevard? Is there, is there any plan that's been mapped out yet? I know we talked about it several months ago, and so it's, because my understanding was that there was money available to start immediately, and I haven't seen anything, so we just want to follow up on that, John.
We will follow up.
I kind of believe that the winter months coming is gonna get less and less ideal for putting down.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but it's also darker a lot longer, and.
Well, yeah.
No, you're right.
But physically, getting the work done is gonna be.
Just lamps or something.
I know, but we have a solution that's, address that.
Yeah, in fact, I think, let me check the minutes, but you know, we were even in the position of advocating for that budget line item back to the council, back to Public Works, probably three months ago. I'd say it was early summer, maybe, late summer, summertime.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was late summer.
Yeah, till August, yeah. Okay, Ruth Ali.
Well, I'm happy to inform on behalf of the Kentlands Security Foundation that we have, over the past 18 months, we've been working with the Kentlands, with the, sorry, it's late, with Kentlands to come up with a solution for particularly Main Street. And so we have finalized a contract with Lift Ward Play, which is a company specialized in retail and marketing, who will be tasked with looking at the lift work properties and trying to manage a comprehensive approach of, and gather support towards a brand and retail mix for the Main Street. And that will be taking off for the next, the course of the next four, four months. And that will be quite a bit of outreach, so stay tuned, we'll be advertising heavily on this effort. And we really hope that we will gather support to create a destination out of Main Street, because we feel like the market, there is a space in the market for those lift works.
Great, excellent. Dan, anything tonight?
Couple things, just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays, and I just wanted to say that the Minutes look great, you revamped the Minutes, the way you're doing it looks really great, very succinct, and we can see exactly what happened in terms of the results of the votes and that kind of thing, and it really looks good, so kudos to you for that. And the webinar, how did that go, the one on, that was November 16th on the sign ordinance, did that actually happen?
We, we watched it, it's, we're.
Is there something we should look at, possibly?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
We're, our next step is to figure out how we're gonna make changes and stuff.
Okay, okay, because I think that's really important, that we get pulled into that.
Oh, you will be.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay, thank you.
I just want to say one last thing, I could have said better than Chris Wessel about the conflicts of, of how everything transpired today, and my conflicts of how everything has transpired, so I just want to second his comments and just, yeah.
Second animotion?
Yeah. I, I.
Have support.
I, I add my support, because he said it best.
Excellent, all right, so from the staff, I guess.
I just have a few things, I'll be very brief because of the hour, but, yeah, we are in the process, as I'm sure you know, of transitioning our meeting management software from Sire to Acela. That's one of the reasons why the Minutes look so much better. I just want to put, put a few shout outs, that's why our municipal clerk, Doris Stokes, is here tonight. I wanted to thank her for being here. You know, we are still actually doing both systems for these meetings, starting in early November, we've, we're doing both systems, everything's getting inputted into both Sire and to Acela. Sometime in December, I think we're going to convert totally to Acela, but still doing both systems, so it's a lot of work for all the staff, and I just want to let you all know that, that, you know, they've, they all have risen to the occasion. And a special shout out to Trudy Schwartz, who has been on the implementation committee for at least a year. And the time she has spent on this transition from one system to another has been extraordinary, so.
It's a team, team effort.
Yeah, I know it's a team effort, but I'm just, you're the planning division chief, so.
So it'll pluck over the, how we access our meeting?
What I was gonna tell you, we are having a work session next Monday night, and presenting the Acela system to the mayor and city council.
Okay.
Dependent on, on their guidance, we hope to go live with it in, on, I believe, December 21st, perhaps January. And it, it has a great interactive area for, for the planning commission. And so when we first get into it, you all will be, be utilizing your computers to get in, to see the information related to the, to the meeting. So we do need to update everyone's passwords if you're not logging into the, your account on the computer on the DAS, but there's a lot of nifty things that come with this system.
Good, great, good, thank you, all right.
So, just a couple other things, Ruth Ali mentioned the One Street, Main, One Main Street initiative. I have been asked to join that committee, so I will be participating with that from. participating with that from now on. Um, I'm excited about that. And, um, also you saw John Aggraciato tonight. Um, he's the chair of the Kentland's Downtown Working Group.
Um, then, you know, that has been actually set up by the KCA to, and their mission is
to ensure a cohesive downtown. You know, obviously we saw two different plans for downtown Kentland's tonight. Um, and, um, I've already met with John and I intend to, um, kind of be the liaison to that committee as well. So.
Great. Do they have a regular scheduled meeting that they?
They do.
Yeah. Excellent. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Anything down here, Greg?
Um, I would just say, Chris Berger, historic preservation planner, you all saw tonight. Um, he has recently taken and passed his American Institute of Certified Planners exam.
Good point.
So we're very happy for him and excited to have another certified planner on staff.
Yeah. We congratulate him.
He's exhausted after taking that test.
He studied very hard. Um, as you know, it's their only meeting in December, so it's the last meeting of 2017. Our next meeting will be January 3rd, 2018. Um, and a reminder, the joint public hearing on the master plan element of the historic preservation, or sorry, the master plan of historic preservation element.
Preservation element, yeah.
Against late night, is, um, Tuesday, February 20th.
Okay. We have that on like, we have that on like.
We haven't, we haven't polled you yet.
We have not. Um, and I think, if I'm right, I believe I sent you a memo from Rob Robinson, our long range planner, on that as well, that we've sent, started the 60-day, um, public notification.
Okay. Good. All right. Andy, anything to add? Good work. Doris, thanks for.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Have a good.